Unmuted. This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Are you off?
The speaker's off.
Does everyone have their iPhones turned off too? Do you have your iPhone muted? Chair's in the upright position.
Is there something I have to turn off on my computer?
No.
Oh, just the phone.
Well, that seat normally rings anyways.
It does. Well, Michael, that's why, we're live.
Yeah, everything's quiet here.
This will be in the bloopers.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for May 24th, 2021. And I'll do so with a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So I ask you then to join me if you will with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business, which is a great privilege, is to welcome Mary Anderson to the Board of Selectmen. And we look forward to working with you for the, for the, my term and your term and everyone else's.
Great. Thank you very much, Larry. It's my pleasure to be here and I hope to represent the town well.
I have no doubt you will. And we only argue occasionally. Moving next then to weekly briefing. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Before I hand it over to our Health Director, Dr. O'Neill, I will just indicate that we did receive, the town did receive a copy of information that was sent to all licensed establishments last week regarding governor's order as it relates to outdoor expansion of service. So after Dr. O'Neill is finished with her update, I'll be updating the board on that matter for you as licensing authorities. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd turn it over to our Health Director.
Katie, floor is yours, or the screen, whichever.
Good evening, everyone. Jamie, you, I have feedback. Okay. Welcome, Mary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Harwich is currently not following any active cases for the first time in a very long time, which is really exciting news. We've also been downgraded to the gray designation. Approximately 66% of our full-time eligible residents have been fully vaccinated, which is a little over 7,500 individuals. This Wednesday, we'll be providing our second dose shots at the community center for our private clinic that we held. Another big news, last Friday, the Board of Health voted to rescind the mask mandate on Route 28 from Bank Street to Lower County Road, effective immediately. So that went into effect on Friday. But the Board of Health would like to remind everyone that if you're not vaccinated, or if you're immunocompromised, it's still advised to wear a mask. Businesses also will still have the right to require masks in their own establishments if they choose. And just to remind everyone that this Saturday, May 29th, the state is releasing all the sector-specific protocols. Those will all be rescinded, and the mask mandate will then become an advisory. So all good things coming our way and our return to normal. Any questions?
No. Excellent news. Questions or comments, Mary?
I have one question. What is the difference between what's effective May 29 and I hear the date of June 15 thrown around? What's, what's June 15?
So June 15th is the date that the state of emergency is projected to end. The 29th is the date that all the requirements will be lifted, and then June 15th is the date that the state is no longer in a state of emergency.
But there's nothing that the public has to do differently between the 29th and the 15th?
Correct. So that, as Joe mentioned, the ABCC regulations will come into effect. So a lot of the regulations had 60 days post the end of state of emergency. So that's when that clock will start to count down.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe?
If the board's completed and Dr. O'Neill's done, I have the updates on ABCC, as well as information we received today from the Mass Municipal Association, which is our trade organization for boards of selectmen, administrators, and managers. Katie, are you all set? Thank you. Stand by to correct me if I say, when I say something wrong, but thank you. And Mary, to your question, as you've heard, so May 29th obviously is a big date for the Commonwealth of Mass. We know that June 15th is anticipated to be the end of emergency, which for Governor Baker, many of his orders were end of emergency plus 60 days. So last week, the ABCC did release their advisory regarding end of COVID-related restrictions. I believe the board members have it in your packets, and this was distributed by the ABCC to all the licensed establishments, so certainly those in Harwich would have received it. But what I wanted to point out is that within the body of that, excuse me, you can see where they indicate that the end of, the end of state of emergency brings with it two important changes. First, it indicates patio/ outdoor expansions. Licensees that have been approved for expanded patio/ outdoor service pursuant to governor's executive orders may continue their outdoor operations for 60 days after the end of state of emergency, which is Sunday, August 15th, 2021. So that much we were anticipating. But it goes on to indicate that the governor and the legislature are working on legislation to extend this deadline. No extension has yet been approved. Licensees that seek to continue after August 15, 2021 are encouraged to apply in the ordinary course for an alteration of premises with their local licensing authority. And so what that means is if, well, when the orders are fully lifted, whether it's August 15th or a date after that based on the legislation, once all of that is over, any establishment that is looking to do outdoor expansion would have to do so as was done in non-pandemic years. And that is to say it would be an application for alteration of their premises, and there's a significant process to go through, both this board as the local licensing authority and then to the state through the ABCC. Secondly, we, I don't know if the members got it, but I know managers and administrators got a notice from the MMA today. There's a bill that is circulating where it's asking for the governor to enact extensions of many things related to pandemic. So obviously, we're aware of the legislation that impacts about outdoor expansion. They're also contemplating legislation that would impact upon remote meetings as we're doing it now, wherein this body may be allowed to meet in person, but you may be able to rely upon remote, remote meetings after the emergency is lifted. And then there are several things related to elections, town elections and town meetings. And that legislation is circulating, and my understanding from the email we got this afternoon is that it needs to be adjudicated before June 15th, before the emergency is in fact lifted. So, excuse me, if I may, we're well aware of May 29th and June 15th, but we should also know that there are going to be more changes and more information coming down the line.
Thank you, Joe. Questions for Joe? Comments? Moving next then to public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we would have the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce for the business update.
Well, I tried to forget Sandy already. Maybe because you're dark Sandy.
Let me open up the window here a little. Good evening, everyone. I too would like to welcome and congratulate Mary Anderson for joining the Board of Selectmen. Super excited to work with Mary in this capacity as well. There are any real updates other than, as Joe and Katie have just mentioned, we're all excited for May 29th and then to see what then follows as well. This weekend showed some real uptick in numbers. The parking lot by the Chamber Building certainly saw pre-summer numbers, so that's a good sign. People were around. The weather was beautiful. The visitor center will open this Friday afternoon, and we will then continue to be open seven days a week through Columbus Day. And I'm looking forward to coming back in the near future with some summer updates and announcements. And just really want to ask everyone out there that listens to this after they've, after it's been recorded, to just remember to be patient this summer, respectful, and to enjoy all Harwich's seven villages. We have so much to offer. And shortly, you will be able to see our new Harwich magazine where we have a special bucket list that shares all of Harwich. So again, this is going to be a tough season for everyone, but again, super excited to see everyone after May 29th.
Thank you, Cindy. Questions for Cindy? Comments? Next, we'll move to public comments and announcements. Ed? You're muted, Ed.
Following up on Cindy's announcement, the Harwich Cranberry Festival Committee had their meeting first in, in a long time, last Thursday, and we voted to move ahead. We are going to be doing a full range of, of our activities, including a July craft show on July 10th and 11th, an August craft show on 14th and 15th. However, different from previous years, instead of being in Brooks Park, we are going to be doing it on the lawn in front of the Cultural Center. In the interim, apparently Brooks Park has been booked out for a number of receptions and parties and family gatherings throughout the summer, which I think is a very good thing. In September, we'll be, we're planning to have Family Beach Day on September 11th, and the Cranberry Festival itself on the 18th and 19th of September. We're not exactly sure at this late date how much of the activities we'll be able to organize, but we're going to do our best. Also, starting on July 8th, we will be holding our summer concert series in the courtyard at the Cultural Center. That'll be every Thursday night for, I believe it's eight Thir- eight Thursdays. We're excited about being able to get back in action again. And given that we've had a year of inactivity, a few of our members have either moved or retired. So as always, we're looking for new members, both to help us with the, the craft shows and the festival, but also with the summer concert series. Deb Enos is, will be coordinating ushers for the concert series, and we will need a lot of help. So if you have an interest, please get in contact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Jenny, excuse me, Michael, you had. Jenny, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say, last week was the first week that Port Free Library was open again to the public, and it went extremely well. So I wanted to announce to the public that we will be expanding our hours as of next Monday, sorry, Tuesday. Monday's the holiday. Tuesday, June 1st, we will be open at 1 o'clock, Monday to Thursday. So it'll be 1 to 7, Monday to Thursday, and 10 to 4, Friday and Saturday. So we invite people to come on in.
Thank you. That, that really means town is opening finally. Is there other public comment? Michael?
I just want to recognize one of our firefighters.
I, yeah, I was going to do that.
Okay. You go ahead.
Well, you can read it. Get the, so we get the names.
Okay, this was sent in from, oh, Dave. Just wanted to let you know that today I was sworn in as Director for the Barnstable County District for Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts. Barnstable County is currently represented by Chief Wynn from Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills, who is the President and Chief Burke from Hyannis, who is the first Vice President. I took over for Chief Burke. I was also re-elected to the Barnstable County Fire Chiefs Executive Board. Harwich Fire has a long history of Fire Chiefs serving both of these organizations, and I'm proud to be able to continue that tradition. Dave will blank.
Thank you, Michael.
My recognition is a little different. I don't know if anyone wants to comment on Dave.
I was just going to comment briefly that this is a recognition only for Dave, but for the fire department in total and the town, how well we respect it in the Cape and among his, among the peers. So it's a, it's an individual honor, but I think, Dave, you would agree, it was a, it's an honor for the fire department in total.
Yeah, certainly, this department's had a long history of serving beyond just the community, and following in the footsteps of Norm Clark and Chief Peterson, to serve on both of these organizations is certainly an honor for me, but again, it's part for the course of what this department has always done. So I'm honored to be chosen and look forward to continuing to serve.
Michael?
I would just say, great job, David, and thank you. I'd like to recognize Captain Donald Parker, which from my understanding, he just started his 38th year with the Harwich Fire Department.
Really?
And knowing Donnie personally for a lot of years, I'm sure he's hating that I'm bringing his name up on TV.
Right, you're telling him that one.
But I do think that milestone is something that we should all recognize and also attribute to what a great fire department we have. But we have a firefighter starting his 38th year, and I think that's remarkable.
And I would tell you, Michael, just out of your comments, that Donnie is the, the workhorse of the department. He's the first one to step up for just about anything that needs to be done. Any call that comes in, he's the first one to call in and come in. And, you know, if everybody followed in his footsteps, we, and a lot of people do, but we have an awesome, completely awesome fire department because he is, he really sets a great example.
And he always has the best attitude.
I'm going to one-up Michael though, and you on the 38th years. We put together a certificate last week for and recognize Ella Lombard, who celebrated her 100th birthday on May 23rd. And so this was, and Ed was involved. He helped bring this forward and help present this. But we presented her with a certificate of recognition, and I'll just read it, is, is awarded to recognize the life that you have lived since the day you were born here in Harwich. You were born and grew through childhood, attended schools, married and raised children, Charles, John, and Lori, worked, and have been a valued member of our community. In your long and continued life in our town, you have brought joy to so many by the way you live your life and care for those around you. It is in this recognition of life well-lived, and that continues to be well-lived, that the board wishes you a happy birthday. And this was presented to her on her birthday. So, Michael?
I just thank Ed McManus for putting that together and dealing with my schedule to get my signature.
I'll, I'll echo that. Ed came to the house in the middle of a plumbing disaster while we were trying to have a party. So thank you, Ed.
Did he fix the plumbing too?
No, he didn't fix the plumbing.
Ed, you have a comment? You're muted, Ed.
Yeah, I stopped by Mrs. Lombard's house, and she was sitting out back and enjoying the warm weather with several family members, and presented her with the certificate. She read it, and I think she was very touched and appreciative of the selectmen's presentation. And we had a nice, long chat about the history of Harwich and also the history of North Harwich and different people and businesses that have been and still are a part of that part of our town. It was quite nice.
Thanks again. Anyone else for public comment?
The only other ones that we're aware of, Mr. Chairman, are related to agenda items.
Okay. We'll come back to that then. Next on you again is a public hearing. Michael, you should.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'll open the public hearing by reading the notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended. The application has been made to this board for, for a transfer of the seasonal on-premise.
Muted.
All alcohol.
Unmuted.
All alcoholic beverages licensed now held by.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're going to have Mr. Paulini. Tom, we need to mute you until they've read the notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended. The application has been made of this board for transfer of a seasonal on-premise, all-alcoholic beverage license now held by Phoenix Park LLC, DBA The Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Brandon O'Reilly, manager, to Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, DBA The Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Thomas Paulini, manager, on the following described premise, premises located at 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass. Two-story wood frame structure with nine rooms on first floor, including dining room and lounge, five rooms on the upper floor, cellar for storage with rear entrances and exits on easterly side of building, and one entrance and exit in the rear and exiting outdoor deck. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application on Monday, May 3rd, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM remotely via go-to meeting, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to dial in, as advertised in the Cape Cod Times, April 15th, 2021, Board of Selectmen Local Licensing Authority. And this is a continuation from a continuation on that from the original date.
Okay. A second?
I'm sure you need a second.
I don't think we need a second, a continuation, so we'll just, Joe, do you have a comment that we'll ask Tom to weigh in?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, as you're, we're going to mute you for a moment. Certainly, Mr. Chairman, as you're seeing your packet, we have updated information where we had, updated information provided by the Health Department, the Building Department. Both of those departments are still in their processes. As you saw, the Board of Health would be meeting on June 15th to finalize the food service. The Building Department indicated that there are several conditions that were attached to the permits that are in consideration. Certainly, if it's the board's intent to continue, your regulations do indicate that you would seek the agreement of the applicant. So I think at this time, Mr. Chairman, it may be appropriate for you to seek Mr. Paulini's input.
Mr. Paulini, let me.
Hi.
Ask you to speak.
Hi. I missed what, I missed a little bit of what you said, Mr. Powers.
So it's my understanding that the board is moving to continue the hearing, is that correct?
You mentioned something about the Building Department still not complete. Is that correct?
I've indicated that the board's packet has been updated by the Building Department and the Health Departments. The Health Department, through the Board of Health, will be meeting later in June, that the Board of, excuse me, that the Building Department has indicated conditions on their permitting process.
Before you start, can I ask everyone else to mute themselves? We're getting a background coming through.
Background from us? I'm sorry.
There's background coming through. It's making it difficult to under, to hear you. So I've asked everyone to mute their microphone until they wish to speak.
Yeah. Can your hearing be better now, sir?
I can.
Okay. I'm here with my partner, Nick Fiorello. And you, you mentioned there are conditions. We have been issued the building permits. So I'm not sure, if you could explain a little bit what the condition, what you mean by conditions on, on that, where I thought they'd be, aren't they complete once we've been issued the permits, as far as the Building Department goes?
So according to the information we have in the packet, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and let me just see if I can pull it up on my information, we were told by the Building Department that the permits that are being requested have conditions on them. And it was my understanding that the applicants were made aware of that. I do recall that there, excuse me, that there was an email exchange between the Building Department and Mr. Paulini. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can address those specifically based on his questions.
Okay. Because I have the same information that it, there was, it was, it still has conditions on the building permit, Mr. Paulini.
And I believe it said certain conditions.
Joe, if you can address those, that would be great.
Sure. If I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a, excuse me, allergies are getting the best of me tonight. We have a memorandum from the Building Commissioner that's in the packet. Please be informed that building permits for the Summer House Cafe, parentheses, Irish Pub, have been issued. There are conditions on the permits from the Community Development Departments, and as you know, that's building, conservation, health, and planning. But the Building Department would be okay with the board to consider the license transfer. Within the packet information for the board, the Building Commissioner has provided copies of the weather card, and within that, you can see that there are conditions written on them. The first one that indicates conditions is relative to, says the location is Route, excuse me, 126 Route 28, which is repairs to the West Cottage Building, including ceilings, new cabinets, new bathroom fixtures. I don't think those conditions impact upon the license being requested. The second weather card indicates that it's a commercial establishment, and it indicates remove, excuse me, renovate and repair restaurant building, including new and repaired ceilings, cabinets, countertops, bathroom fixtures, and kitchen food prep repairs. Written on the weather card are several conditions. Says the property is restricted to limited food service only. No onsite preparation is allowed until a new septic system is installed. This will include the prohibition of rail dishware, including cups, utensils, plates, serving material, et cetera. A food permit must be pulled, and the kitchen must be inspected prior to reopening, which requires a minimum of one week's notice when scheduling the appointment. The septic system must be upgraded prior to change in food permit or issuance of building permits with the exclusion of these stated repairs. And then it goes on to talk about how they can get an inspection. It indicates that replacement insulation must provide the highest possible R-value. No structural work, work is allowed under the permit. The permit card and approved plans must be kept onsite and accessible at all times during construction. Sheet metal permit and duct test will be required if new duct system is installed. Rough insulation and final inspections are required for this project. And then last, I believe there's a third weather card. And it relates to the rare cottage building. Mr. Chairman, I do know that we have some representatives from the Community Development Organizational Structure, including our Building Commissioner and our Director of Planning and Community Development. I believe Katie's still on the line, so if the board had questions regarding permits and conditions, I would defer to those staff members.
Well, I would appreciate that because you, I'd like clarification. You wrote a long list of items, but the conclusion that was presented to us is that, is you can do those after we approve the liquor license, if we chose to do so?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be best to call upon the Building Commissioner first.
Okay. Ray, I don't see you, but are you?
Mr. Chair, could you ask Mr. Paulini to mute his mic unless we call on him?
Yeah. Ray, I think, you have a TV on or something in the background? Because we're getting noise.
Yeah, no, I'm, I was muted the whole time.
Okay. There's someone that is carrying through noise. I'd ask again, unless you're speaking, if you'd mute yourself, it would help us out. Hi, Ray. Do you wish to comment and explain this to us?
No, I think Joe did pretty good. The conditions, a lot of them are standard. The main conditions were about the septic and the food service that the Health Department put on. They, these can be done, the work can be started as far as the Building Department is concerned. And the, the liquor transfer is, is fine with the Building Department, you know, based on the building permits.
Do you, at the same time, is there a time limit for the, for them to comply with the list that Joe read?
The, the, the standard time. The standard time limit is 180 days. Work must be started in 180 days, and as long as continuous progress is shown during that period, there is no time limit on a building permit.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Other questions for Ray? Michael?
I don't have other questions, and I don't see why this board would continue this, not continue, but hear the public hearing today, over to continue it if we don't get satisfactory. But there's residents that are on the call tonight, we've now continued at the end time, they're going to have to apply for a liquor license at some point, and we're either going to make the decision to transfer the license or we're not. They can't open without the community development work done. So I, my suggestion would be that we continue going forward with this public hearing tonight and not postpone it.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I'd like to hear from if Katie's on the, what's the implication of the Board of Health meeting on June 15th regarding the liquor license?
So really, the most important part is that they schedule their opening inspection to inspect the rest, the kitchen. That's really the most important part. Everyone is booking their inspections right now, so we are at least a week out. We could issue a temporary food permit until the 15th, when the Board of Health meets, as long as the inspection is done. So really, for us, the most important part is getting in there and performing the kitchen inspection.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Katie, you indicated that there was a problem with the septic system. To what degree? Because, I mean, intrinsically, if you start serving alcohol, you're definitely going to need a functioning septic system.
It's not that it's not functioning right now, but it does require an upgrade to come into compliance with Title V Code. We've been working with Mr. Paulini, and we have an understanding of what they'll be using for flow, basically, in terms of, they won't be washing dishes, it'll be much like the flow that was existing at the Irish Pub prior to this change. So they can continue on with what was being done, but they can't increase in any way.
Okay. I guess one other question, Joel, I'll direct this to you.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Paulini, we're going to keep you on mute, the chairman will recognize you when he wants you to speak.
Okay. Okay, sure.
This is for a liquor license, not for entertainment license, and there's nothing, no entertainment outside that we're considering tonight, is that correct?
Correct. There is an application in, but that is not.
But that's not what we're looking at tonight.
To the board this evening. The board is being presented with the potential of a transfer of an alcohol license, and the board would be opening the hearing, conducting the hearing, and relying upon Balleran factors.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get deep into opening up the hearing, having testimony, I would agree with Michael about this, except for one thing, and it's fundamental to this. How is this a transfer? The license wasn't being utilized for the longest time. The person who held the license has no property interest in the property. The person who's now leasing that property from him has no relationship to the business that had been performing there for years prior to that under its own license. Normally, you would turn in a license, and it would be issued as a, as a brand-new license.
So it's my understanding it's a transfer because the Cape Cod Irish Pub, and I apologize if I'm calling the wrong name, renewed their seasonal license.
But they didn't have a lease with which to operate that license?
At the time that they renewed, the application was in order.
Okay.
I would also suggest, however, the board can rely upon any number of factors as you go through this process this evening to render your decisions.
Yeah.
So any number of those points could be brought up to bear on your decision-making process if you conclude your public hearing tonight and render a decision.
Okay. Mr. Paulini, can I ask you to?
Mr. Chairman, I may. If, if you're willing to hear from Mr. Paulini and you're willing to go forward with the public hearing, I would recommend we start that process officially, and then you would hear from the applicant.
We did not do so when we opened the hearing to continuation?
My understanding is that the continuation was first contemplated to be continued to another meeting. It's my understanding now that the board wishes to get into the matter. If the board wishes to get into the matter tonight, we should go through our procedures.
Was that your intent, Michael? I?
I would just say that my intent when I opened the public hearing, because I knew nothing about any continuation based on the material in the packet, my intent was to open the public hearing for the public to speak and the applicant to give his.
Well, we.
Testimony or whatever.
So we'd have to open this to public testimony.
Okay. So we need another action, it's not open enough?
No, I believe you are back now in the public hearing.
We're back now in the public hearing, yes.
You might want me to begin the procedural stuff.
I'll call you to begin the procedural stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And as you'll see in your packet, again, this is a transfer that is being impacted upon by Chapter 138, which is the state's Alcohol Control Commission laws, and within that, Section 23, where you will be rendering a decision on this application for transfer from one establishment to another. And the things, as you've heard in the past, that you want to keep to mind are that Section 23 speaks to the public need, the common good, and the adequate number of locations. Specifically to that, you would be relying upon what are known as the Balleran factors in your deliberations this evening or in a future meeting, and those Balleran factors come from the Massachusetts Appeals Court case, Balleran Incorporated versus the Licensing Board of Boston. The Balleran case clearly articulates the factors that will be used by this board to form a basis in this application to determine the issuance or denial of the requested license action. The Balleran factors are, number one, public need, meaning a consideration of the public want and the appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location. Number two, consideration of the number of existing dispensaries in a locality. Number three, the views of the inhabitants of the locality in which the license is sought. Number four, traffic. Number five, noise. Number six, size. Number seven, the sort of operation that carries the license. And finally, Balleran factor number eight, consideration of the reputation of the applicant. So, Mr. Chairman, you would now open the public hearing by way of a specific motion. You have, I believe, done that, but I don't believe you finished the motion. I believe Selectman McCaskill made a motion to open, but there was no second or vote.
Second? I'll take a roll call then. Don?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm I, so reopen the public hearing.
Thank you. And then the next step in the procedures that you've worked with before is that I and staff can go over the application documentation and comments from the responding town departments. So of course, we've gotten into the discussion on anything related to the building permit, the health considerations. That's not to say that you could revisit, you couldn't revisit that, you certainly could. But I think the next item that the board should be aware of in your packet is, as staff reviewed, we have memoranda that were provided. The first memorandum is provided by Chief Gilmet. It's in your packet, and the chief does raise some concerns relative to the managers that are being applied for and considered in this application. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I think it would be appropriate for me to yield and for you to call upon Chief Gilmet.
Chief Gilmet, you wish to comment on your memo?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my memo says, there were no disqualifying events, criminal events, but I did notice on the application packet, I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that there were previous liquor code violations, one, I believe, in 2003, and one in 2016, an underage issue and an over-serving issue. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. I have not done any research into that, and the application is fairly slim on details related to those incidents.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, Mr. Chairman, I think the packet that you have is fairly comprehensive. We've heard from staff, at this point, I can yield, and if you want to recognize Mr. Paulini and his partners, they could certainly make their presentation if that's what the board wishes.
Thank you. Before we go there, I have a question for Ray, I think, and that is the parking. Because it, I think there's 100 and some, 162 is the seating cap, and I can see 375. Is there enough parking, I guess, to handle that, that type of crowd?
And, Mr. Chairman, your question was directed to our Building Commissioner?
It was directed towards Ray, yes.
Yeah, we did, we did not change the parking, we kept the same parking that that's there now. I don't know exactly what that is off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Paulini, you wish to comment now?
Hi. Hi, ladies and gentlemen.
My partner, Nick Fiorello.
How are you today? I can address what our application is. We're looking for a transfer of the existing license that has been there at the Irish Pub Village for quite some time. I'm a new resident to Harwich Port, my wife and I moved here with my two children that are both in Montemoy High School, and my wife is an educator at Montemoy Elementary, and Tom and I have known each other for probably, well, 30 years anyways, I'm not that, that old. And we're looking for something for quite some time on the Cape that I could actually get my family involved in and helping get involved in exciting, kind of historically rich Captain Khalid Case's house. And we're looking to bring something new to Harwich and something a little bit more family-oriented, a little less rough and tumble as the Irish Pub coming to town, learning about it, hearing about it. That's not what we're looking forward and doing. We're looking forward to eventually, through upgraded septic and such, over the winter months, to come into some sort of a full-scale Cape Cod casual experience that will have some interesting, unique Cape Cod fare, some entertainment, and then other activities in and about the entire property. And I'm asking the board today to approve the transfer of the license with any conditions that may have been brought up earlier on by anyone at the board, from the building inspector on down, who's been very, very helpful in working with us, to the Board of Health, who's been very helpful in working with us, the Conservation Commission has chimed in, the Planning Board. We're talking about some exciting improvements, if you guys seen as of the late, we're trying to do 40-plus years of deferred maintenance and sprucing the place up the best we can for the season, and we hope that you could approve the transfer of the license and any conditions being, allowing us to, you know, earn those conditions with the various departments here at the town of Harwich, so we can actually try to get our establishment open and offer it to the public, to the local community, and to our important visitors that come down here in the summer. So I hope you guys have any questions for us. I'm an experienced real estate developer, I'm involved in multiple municipalities throughout the Commonwealth in very, very large-scale projects. I also am the holder of two other liquor licenses, they're both respected restaurants. One in the North End of Boston, even though I'm Italian, it's a Japanese sushi bar, go figure that one. And then another one off Vannell Hall, it's a tiki bar. Tom has been on Cape in and around, from Casino Wharf in Falmouth, all the way up to what you might now remember as this rumor is the improper Bostonian. We all know the improper Bostonian from 20 years ago. You might not have heard a lot about it for the past six seasons, that's because Tom has been in charge, and there's been zero incidences whatsoever at that establishment, and he's really turned that around in the town, actually. Until such time, though, the owner of the property from New York decided not to reopen. I was fortunate enough to bring Tom in as an operating partner, and we're super excited, and my kids are super excited. I hope you guys will approve the transfer, so we can start this long-term process of bringing, you know, the Khalid Chase house back to the Herring River in its former glory, similar to the historical pictures that you guys have been posting online, which is really exciting. I hope I didn't talk too much, but here we are.
Thank you, Nick. I guess I'll, I need to ask, because we, Joel did read the Balleran factors on reputation of applicant, the two violations that the chief mentioned, did, do you want to just explain that?
I could address those. I'll speak. I'll handle the first one. So I think it was 2016 the chief referenced. We had a violation at the restaurant, the North End. It was very unique set of circumstances during the college weeks. We do a lot of business with the college community when they have graduations, and they had came in and did a perusal of the establishment, and there was a table with 12 family members, and one of the family members was not 21, did not have any alcohol, but there was a bottle of wine at the table, and the empty was his graduating brother at the time. And we actually had a quash or continued without a finding, and that was our first and only issue at Crudo North End LLC, which is Crudo on Salem Street. And I think Tom will make reference to something in 2003.
Right.
So go ahead, Tom.
The violation that I was involved in was at the Black Rock Tuscan Grill, when I operated that, that was in South yard at the Route 28, and it was in November of 2003, I recall, and it, it was an over-service of an individual. The police had been there because they had been in the parking lot and noticed a car of somebody they were looking for. They came in looking for that individual. At that point, they saw a person who had had a little bit too much at the bar, and they violated us there. I had, I had been involved, I had liquor licenses in my name, been involved as an owner, operator since 1977, and that's my only violation that I've had in 44 years. And I'm proud of that, quite honestly. And that was a mistake. I was there, I didn't notice it, and, you know, we were, I think we were handed a two-day suspension for that, if I recall.
Thank you, Tom. In terms of Sally and Lou, I see you've joined us, you have a, do you wish to comment?
Larry?
Yes.
If we could go to the other board members for questions before we open it up to the public?
Well, I was going to get that and then close the public hearing, so we haven't discussed ourselves.
Well, I, we will delivery, but the next step in the Balleran factor is the board to ask questions.
You can, okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Well, I don't want to start. You start. I'm going to defer my questions.
Okay, okay. Mary, go ahead.
I have a question. I'm just curious, I haven't been to the Irish Pub in years, but do I understand that you will be using paper products, no glass due to the septic? And no?
That is correct.
And no food can be prepared on-site?
That is correct. We had entered into a communal effort with the Board of Health that seemed to fit well in COVID with plastic and food prepared off-site that we would drop at the table, and we have a package of plastic and a little, you know, it's a beautiful plastic container, and, you know, similar that you would get at some of the food courts at the supermarket and things like that, from salads to wraps. We'll have a lobster roll that will be encapsulated in a beautiful, yeah, pre-prepared package, but it's all high-end plastics in recyclables and not any glassware to wash, not any silverware to wash, not any plateware or glasses at this point. And we've already started the process to upgrade the septic, which will take, is a process now that's ongoing, and we figure we could get started on that in the late fall of 2021. So I hope that answers. It's classic.
But you see that as, as a viable business until you get the septic? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a question, or a couple of questions, but one for Tom. Are you indicating that you've had a, you've held a continuous license or associated with a liquor license since 1977?
Outside of maybe two or three years, yes, I've been involved with, yes, I've been involved in Newton and Falmouth. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, because I've seen a recall that you were acting as an ad rep for, I think it was WCOD, the mid-'90s.
Right, right. Yeah, that was for three years in the '90s, yes.
Okay.
But even that, I worked, I worked part-time. I was working, there was, out of 44 years, there are less than three years that I did not have either a manager of an establishment or part-owner or operator. I've had liquor license in Newton, Falmouth, Barnstable, Yarmouth, Dennis. Those are the towns.
And in a more general way, either of the two partners? What's the magnitude of? And in a more general way, either of the two partners, what's the magnitude of the food service? Because at a certain level, you become a tabloid if you really don't have food.
So we are complying with the suggestions of the Board of Health to keep in compliance with our restricted septic. Again, similar to what you might see at some, the COVID restrictions that were coming out of when there was limited food service at the tables and stuff. This is just a temporary, you know, offering a limited menu so we can focus on the bigger picture of, you know, really improving the property and doing a lot of great things at the property for the, you know, for the town and the entire mid-Cape area.
We submitted a menu to the, to the Health Department. Everything that we're going to serve will be prepared off-premise. We'll be serving things like pizza, salads with, like Caesar chicken salads, things like that. Everything will be prepared off-premise, so we don't have to do any washing or, as Nick said, no tableware at all.
Yeah, I wasn't heading towards restrictions. I was actually trying to understand, in general, in this town, we don't have just bars. So I was hoping to hear the magnitude of the food service.
Oh, I could, I could help out with that. So as we look to expand the septic, what we plan on doing is returning the Captain Chase, you know, Chase's property into what it was, I think since the late 1800s. And it became similar, I think it was called Good Cheer, to a full-service in bed and breakfast and restaurant on the Herring River. That's, that's the immediate, immediate goal for our long-term plans, is to turn that into exactly what it was in as the Irish pub, a long-term, beautiful, full-service restaurant that will have entertainment, that will have possibly micro weddings and community events and excitement on the river, and really, really be the gateway of the entire sea captain's role there. I'm a large-scale developer. I have been awarded eight liquor licenses in the town of Swansea. I'm involved in a half a billion dollar renovation of the Swansea Mall. And we've actually moved the town, the town itself's town hall is moving to our project. I am in for the long haul. I'm a resident here. I just bought a house across from Witcher Harbor. My wife and my two children love the system, the school. We're going to stay here on the Cape. I've summered here all my life in Yarmouth. And we're super excited about it as a big, long-term project, and our reputations are very important to us. So we're not going to be running a gin mill or anything other than an upscale, beautiful establishment. I will add some little bit more background about myself. In the vacation and community of Cape Cod, I own a portfolio of vacation rentals, large-scale houses from Nantucket to Denham. And I host MIT, Harvard, Google, Vertex, a lot of functions that come out of, events that come out of Hyannis, the houses I have on Lewis Bay. We host sober retreats to yoga, and it's in vacation rentals. So we're very in tune to what needs to happen long-term to be a good neighbor in the town of Harwich and beyond here in the mid-Cape area. I hope that answers what our plans are, but it's, it's exciting, and it will involve renovating the property to its former glory as the Captain Tullie Case, Chase's house.
And just one final thought. Hopefully, we'd be doing these in a bundle, but we're not. The entertainment portion of that, I heard excitement on the riverbank. We are, we've spent the last six months really grappling with noise from almost every establishment. If anything, even though we're not considering it now, I just want you to know that we're probably going to be taking a real serious look at anything that involves outdoor entertainment because the sound in that corridor really travels. Outside sound is probably going to be a real problem.
Yeah, we're very, very well aware of that. And we don't really intend on being any, anything like what was there in the past, and very respectful of our neighbors. And we're here for the long-term enjoyment. And anything with outside and such, I think we'll have to handle that in the future, but we're really just focused on what we're doing and repositioning the place for the long-term revitalization of that property. So I'm very respectful about the noise, and we're taking precautions with that. We got to have, you know, good neighbors and, you know, fences and sound and sound and fences, they have to be one of the same. So we are very respectful, and we'll work with the neighbors to keep our noise to be of no issue.
Thank you, Nick. Michael?
I'll keep it very brief. The, I appreciate your comments about being a friendly neighbor, and I think in this part of town, in, more so than other parts of towns that we've grappled with, this is a very vocal group of neighbors and a very widespread group of people that care about the historic nature of that part of town and enjoy their peace and quiet. So we're not here for entertainment tonight, but as you build your model, being a friendly neighbor and realizing that all your dreams might not come true as you talk about expansion on the river, that's going to be a hurdle for you, I believe. But we'll take that up when we get to it. I'm happy to hear that you are going to work on the, on the septic system. I think it's long overdue. And, you know, plastic is a, is a great thing to get you guys started, but it's not a great thing for the environment, and I hope we can get to septic system sooner rather than later. My question, the only question I really have is, have either of you ever been denied a liquor license from any other city or town?
This is Tom. No, I have not, ever.
Okay.
I had, I had one probably in the late '90s that I was a minority partner in, at the town, decided not to issue the, it was a new license on a certain area of town, but I was a minority partner.
Okay, so it was based on, based on the geography, not based on reputation or past violations?
Correct.
Thank you. Well, you know, I would, I would, board's going to hear from public now, but I'm not sure if I did, but welcome to Harwich.
Hey, thank you, thank you. I'll let you know in a little bit. I know, I'm teasing.
Okay. Let me open it up to public comment. Those in favor of the application? Those opposed? Any comment?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, it's Sally Urbano. Can I comment?
You may.
Okay, great. We have no opposition at all. In fact, we're, we've been driving by and excited to see the work they're doing on the, the building that's long needed, and I think it's going to be a great asset. The vision that you propose sounds wonderful. I had a couple of concerns, and someone addressed noise, which was at the top of the list, I think, not only because of our past history in the neighborhood, but also because we know they did the sound study on that corridor, and sound is magnified. That was my biggest concern. But my second question was associated with the transfer of the liquor license, is there a closing time that will be addressed?
Yes, yes. That will, when we make the motion, we'll put in a closing time as part of the motion. And I know Michael's not reading to, because I looked him, but what we'll do, we'll try to follow the closing times that we've used in other establishments in town.
Larry, this is Lou. I have one question.
Sure.
One, I welcome a new business in that community. I love the work that's being done. I hope they're working with the historic commitment, being that the building is over 100 years old. My real concern is everything I've heard sounds almost too good. I wouldn't be too excited about that comment. That could be, you know, my, my real issue is, everything you're going to do represents a lot of people. And if I know that parking lot, it holds maximum, how many cars? 60, 50? And that's being very generous. So how does your vision, which is great, weddings, events, restaurants, places for people to visit and reside, how can all those people fit into that? And if not, where will the overflow go? Because there aren't too many places outside. And will the town then be responsible for putting no parking signs on all the streets? So the vision has to meet the practicality, and I have a problem with that from a parking perspective.
Thank you, Lou. I guess, Nick, I'll ask you to comment on, on the parking issues. I mean, you're, you're looking for more to growth. It was, it hasn't been a factor in the past, I guess, but the business was not that heavy, the Irish pub. Tom, please?
I could comment. Hi, guys. I could comment about that. The hospitality industry has been changing by leaps and bounds, and the shared pool ride service has really done a very good job of helping all Cape Cod hospitality establishments operate with safer driving, keeping our, sometimes people that may take too much excitement into their own wheels, into the, you know, Uber and ride-sharing apps and parking in all establishments on the Cape, and the rideshare has really, really changed the makeup of how that actually works. And I do not anticipate any, any, any issues with parking, and we'll be very respectful of that, and we'll always let our patrons know that ride pooling and Uber rideshare is the way to go, especially visiting, you know, towards the early evening if we're offering something.
Okay. Lou, you have a follow-up question?
Ginny Doyle.
Jenny, okay.
I want to say that I am very encouraged by the fact that you're going to upgrade the septic system. This is long, long overdue. For years, it has been abused, and we've been trying to protect that beautiful river for so many years. And I think we have to watch very, very carefully what goes on with the upgrading of that septic system. I would also like to inquire, are you continuing to rent this property from the owner, or are you buying it from him?
So I can address those two items that you raised. I've entered into a very, very long-term lease with specific language in the lease to address the septic upgrades. We've already engaged both a civil engineer and a septic design engineer, and we began the process of citing the, of course, what will be an above-ground septic on the property. And we also have a bona fide option within our 20-plus-year lease to purchase the property, which I intend on doing much sooner than later. I have a vast experience in the renovation of historic buildings, unique properties, and look forward to bringing back the former glory and being respectful of everybody on the river, including our less desirable problems with the septic. So that's first on the agenda. I've already invested a substantial amount of money in the planning stages, and we intend on breaking ground as soon as we can get the official okay. And it's, we're tentatively saying it couldn't happen as early as September 20th of this year.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to impress upon you is that the neighbors in that area, of which I am one of them, and we've, we've spent a lot of time establishing Captain's Row and getting that up and running, and Sally and Lou have worked tirelessly on that. But I, we are going to be watching very carefully what kind of entertainment license is granted to you all. So just be, just know that's going to be an issue with a lot of neighbors. So I wanted you to know that upfront.
No, we completely understand. And if I wasn't so busy, I, I'm actually excited about Captain's Row. I see a lot of other properties that have piqued my interest. This is what I do for a living. I'd be happy to meet with you guys and, you know, let you see what I've accomplished and what some of our plans are for Captain Chase's house. And I'm sure you guys would get excited. I'm looking to really get involved in that whole area as a great neighbor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Welcome.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you, Jenny. Lou, did you have a follow-up?
No, I just wanted to say I'm very excited about having them here first, and that's the most important. We do have a picture of the house that we'd love to show you. The parking still concerns me. I don't think that Uber is an answer to West Harwich's traffic problems. I wish you'd give that a little more thought in terms of your growth model, because that's critical in terms of everything you're doing. You know, that, I don't want to belabor that point, but that's the one that, if you'll give some thought, you'll make me a happy person.
Is that, is this Lou? Was that Lou speaking?
Yes.
Lou, hi. Okay. We absolutely have some ideas about all the issues that were raised tonight, and we plan on addressing the parking. You know, we're going to manage it well, and we're going to talk with our neighbors, and we're going to do whatever we can to conform, you know, within the laws and do better than that. We can, we can do better. I'm in a very, you know, different position than I was as a young, a young lad getting into the hospitality business. This is actually was kind of like a wedding present, I don't know why, but for my wife to have something fun with the kids, and she's, she's really into crafts and in design. And we love, you know, what Harwich Port's all about, and we love Main Street, and we love the vendors and the art galleries. And we've got some really exciting plans from there, and I'm sure it's going to be well, well within what you guys hope to be. And I'm prepared to, you know, shepherd, shepherd this property for the next, you know, however many years, because it's been around a long time. So I'm just a custodian for a little while of this property.
We, other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. I'll take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm I. Comments from the board? I'll entertain a motion to...
The only question I had, Larry, is you commented that we would put the pouring times on the license, and that's not something we normally do. We, we do definitely do entertainment, but pouring times on the license are what's allowed by the state. And I know our police chief kind of requires or asks that people stop pouring, I think it was 12:30, and maybe the chief could, could chime in on this. And the rationale that I heard from him years ago was it gives people time to settle down and leave. So I'm not saying that we were granted till 1, but we've not put a time.
A closing time. Chief, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I think you folks have just gone along with the state regulation, which is closing at 1 a.m. I don't remember talking about pouring times so much as the inside entertainment I was looking to end by midnight to allow for a one-hour cooldown, because we had a few issues with that some years back.
And that's probably, and that's my mistake. I've been getting mixed up with liquor and entertainment, where we do have specific times. Michael?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the transfer of the seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverage license now held by Phoenix Park LLC.
You have to make findings on the Baller and Factors.
Do you want to make findings on the Baller and Factors?
Yeah.
Do you want to do the findings, or do you want me to do the findings? Give me a minute. While we're doing that.
Yes, Don?
Yeah, well, Michael's looking for, I just wanted to point out to the, the new owners that, just a piece of minutia here, but we've got a number of different villages in town, and you just happen to be on the other side into West Harwich, not Harwich Port.
Right.
I've got the fact.
Yes, that is correct.
You have in front of you?
I haven't, I haven't.
Okay.
But I guess my question to town administrators, all we really have to do is that we've asked the questions and that we don't find any of the Baller and Factors. So I would...
Correct. You would want to dispose of the Baller and Factors. You could make a motion that none of the Baller and Factors apply or impact upon your decision-making.
I would move that, I would move that we dispose of the, or dispose of the Baller and Factors, that none of them...
I would move that we dispose of the balderang factors, that none of them...
Will prevent us from granting a license. Right. Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
No.
And I'm an aye. Don, you have a...
You know, the only comment that I have to make is that, when I made to you before the meeting, is regardless of... I kind of look at this as a new license issuance rather than a transfer, but it's become rather obvious that the last 15 or 20 years of actions on the Board of Selectmen were on the naive assumption that they could go after an establishment in year two or year three and say, "We can't continue this way. We're going to cancel the license," and that is clearly not what we're capable of doing, based on the last few hearings that we've had. I would have rather gone down the entire list and made no findings on it than just dispose of them, so that's why I voted the way I did.
Okay.
Okay, but I think we do have a motion and a second?
No, we don't. Oh, yeah.
We do have a second, and it passed.
Three, one.
It's passed three to one.
Okay. So, and Don, I appreciate that. Next time, maybe I should go through the, all the factors, and that's fine. And Don, I would tell you, I agree with your statement, and I hope the applicants are hearing tonight the concerns of the residents and the concerns of the board. And Don, to your last point, we are due to have a public hearing and a lot of board meetings on the findings of facts of the Noise Containment Committee and what the board is going to set up for an enforcement division and how we're going to go forward, so that we're not doing what we just did in hearings. So I think that expanding beyond what you're permitted for, I can tell you that if I have my way as a board member, won't be allowed, and we are going to come up with criteria so that doesn't happen. So with that said, I would make a motion that we, the board, transfer, that we transfer the seasonal on-premise all-alcoholic beverage license now held by Phoenix Park LLC, DBA The Cape Cod Irish Pub, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass., Brandon O'Reilly, manager, to Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC, DBA The Summer House Cafe, 126 Route 28, West Harwich, Mass., Thomas Pelini, manager, with all other previously, previous restrictions
From the prior license.
From the prior license be added to it, and that staff comments and staff requests get taken care of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call. Don, be consistent?
I'm going to be consistent and say no. I would have rather seen the work done and then we approved.
Okay. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye. And we, Don, we do recognize your concerns and will look forward on that, but motion's passed, and Nick and Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just, again, welcome, welcome to Harwich and welcome to the new business and the... Don, to your comment, the only reason that I'm not voting that way is because they need to get their liquor license, and they need to go through a whole nother step, and we're not going to, obviously, board the health and building. They're not going to give them access to the building to operate until they're done with that work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Best of luck. We'll...
Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody. Nice to meet you, Lou and Sally. Bye-bye. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Caleb Chase fund request in the amount of $933.57.
Second. Second. Take a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. So we'll move to a new business, and Joe, I guess I'll start with you, and then we'll...
I would like to turn it directly over to our finance director because of her efforts with our treasurer. Our finance director has an amazing story to tell.
Good evening. Carol Capola, Finance Director. Annually, the town of Harwich goes out to the bond market and sells sometimes long-term bonds and then short-term ones as well. And we typically do this in May of every year. Last year, we thought we received an extremely favorable rate on our bond anticipation notes, they're also called bands, at a 1.004% net interest cost. However, this year, we have some remarkable news for the board and certainly the public. On May 19, 2021, the bands sold on the competitive market. There were five competitive bids received at a net interest cost of .3196%. And that is certainly indicative of the bond market, the municipal bond market, and the favorable results there. These bands are there to support road maintenance projects, the Fire Station 2 design work, because we pay them off every year, and then some other small projects like Cold Brook, which is part of the sewer construction project that is currently happening. Cold Brook is not a project that is funded by the State Revolving Loan Fund, so that requires the town to go out to the bond market, the municipal bond market, to handle that was borrowings. So I do respectfully ask the board to consider authorizing and approving the bond anticipation notes that were sold on May 19, 2021, to Fidelity Capital Markets in the amount of $1,408,300 and a net interest cost of 3.196%.
You want to say that again, Carol?
Point three.
Point three.
.3196%.
That's giving a decimal place on us.
Will we say that number one more time till we got it? Michael?
Just as a formality, Carol, do you need us to, need me or us to read all five motions in the packet? Or can we read what you just read as a motion? So there's a letter in here that I, as the clerk, have to certify that these votes were taken. Do you want us to read just this, or do you need me to read all of it?
The bear of bad tidings, typically, the clerk does read all of them.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the sale of $1,408,301% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated June 11, 2021, and payable June 10, 2022, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Finance Services LLC, at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $9,555.32.
Second.
Other discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, Carol, and Amy?
Four more. I move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 11, 2021, and final official statement dated May 19, 2021, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
I move that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking a compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time.
I'd second, but I believe that's the Securities and Exchange Commission.
That is it.
As opposed to SEC?
And that was in my motion.
Okay. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
I'm an aye, and I think this is the last one.
I move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mary, I'll go with you first. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
I move that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient or conveyant to carry and to effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second, it is convenient.
Pardon, Don?
It is convenient.
Convenient.
Convenient, yeah. My glasses skipped.
Discussion? Roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye.
I'm just looking forward to next year when they pay us to borrow money.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Amy? Thank you. It's great to have good news. Don?
Yeah, I don't want to let this opportunity pass. This is the result of a long slog of hard work through the years, and we've got a great management team, and there's a lot more confidence than ever before on us on the financial side. So our thanks to everybody sitting in this room, because it wouldn't have been possible without you guys.
Agreed.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You can stick around, though.
I think I better things to do.
Jamie wants to go with you.
I do.
Next on the agenda is a discussion of possible vote of our summer schedule. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If I could build off of that era of good feeling, here is a proposed schedule for the board for your consideration. Excuse me. It takes into consideration well-earned vacation time of staff, which is others as well as myself, and gets to and every other meeting scheduled with the board commencing after, technically after, 4th of July. So this has been vetted, and hereby request the board's consideration of this, and also that during the summer schedule that the board entertain beginning your meetings at 6:00 p.m. rather than 6:30.
Okay. Discussion? Michael?
I don't have a problem with this, and up until last year, we did do every other week.
Right.
The slight problem I have with it is we are so far behind on so many things, and I found by going every other week that our meetings ended up being three, four hours long, and that we paid for it, and then we still fell behind. And every year, we get to the warrant process, and we get to the budget, and then we end up scrambling, and we're doing everything in a hurry, and we're asking everybody to do everything in a hurry. So the only way I'll support this is if we agree that in these, some of these off weeks that we can call a special meeting, and that we take things up, like we have a historic article that we tabled this year, we have two zoning articles that we tabled this year, we have two conservation articles, one that was from two years ago, one that was from this year that the public got absolutely no education on in this room, and then we have a laundry list of things, select boards versus selectmen, and I think I've got 20 items written down so far that we're no more than a quarter of the way done with. We've talked about revolving funds now for at least four years, and we've not taken that up. I don't see the point in taking a week off every week, as much as I love my summer, my grandkids, my family, and the beach, and the boat. So I'm willing to give it a shot, but we have, I believe we have to leave it open, and I don't know how we do that, Joe, so staff knows that the board can call a special meeting. But I think there should be some educational meetings mixed into these weeks off where we take things up that are going to be a lot of debate. I will not spend another year waiting until a month or two before town meeting to talk about important things and then vote to take them off the warrant. And there is an awful lot of work that this board has to get done this year, and we're short one member, which adds the liaison list for everybody that adds to that. So the only way I'll support this is if there's some give and take and meetings can be, otherwise I just vote no.
If I could...
Mary, go ahead.
Jump in. Michael took the words right out of my mouth. Watching from a distance from the finance chair, I was just struck at what a jumble that was, and everything really needs to be backed up. But I also respect that all of you have spent way too many hours in these chairs of late. So I could go either way on this. Is there a way to maybe skinny it down a little? Maybe go every other for part of July and part of August?
My, Don, go ahead, and I'll put my thoughts in.
Yeah, to Mary's point, it actually, the way to do it is by approving the list with the caveat that Michael has, because I feel the same way. I mean, ultimately, I wouldn't want to see it fill in each week with just another meeting. There probably should be a special purpose, maybe a single-topic meeting to finish off some of these things, so that there's a beginning, a middle, and an end. We continue to get to the middle. The end seems to be the vexing part, where we're never quite there. So if we need, I'm fully aware that the staff is extremely stretched, because we've been operating on crisis mode between COVID and two town meetings within six months of each other, but at some point in time, we're probably going to have to use one of these spots in between to do a single-subject meeting.
I think I'm in line with that. Why look at this? I would like to see us approve this summer schedule, and then separately develop schedules for some of the big-ticket items, the Montemoy School, the elementary school discussion, wastewater, have a separate schedule on that. There's some other, we could do separately outside of this one to address these issues. So we have, this as being our fundamental selectmen's meeting, but then have a series of big-topic items that we work through.
So you're saying not to make any travel plans?
Yeah, because we do need to catch up on this, and, you know, we've, not to be disrespectful, if you may, but, you know, we view the reasoning that we're too, because of having outdoor, because of COVID and outdoor, that we put things off. We've played that card as many times as we can. We have to address these issues. I'm just suggesting that we take the big-ticket items, we keep this as our standard, then we come back with a big ticket and schedule those separately through the summer. Michael?
I move that we approve...
If I, may I just?
Go ahead.
Not to deny the progress that may occur, but I do find it important to just build off of your comments, but also respond to let you know what the team and I have been working on and will continue to work on, whatever the schedule may be. And we did talk as a group, and of course, I, for the benefit of all, I'm speaking directly about the administration team, so myself, Megan, Danielle, and Ellen, and it's my opportunity to remind everybody that town meeting is 343 days from today. There's a reason why that appears on my whiteboard, and I check it daily. But, excuse me, to all the points that were made, I wouldn't argue against any one of them. I would, however, just say to the board, as has been said, we handled two annual town meetings in far less than a year, in fact, just over a six-month span between the two town meetings, within the grips of the pandemic. However, I feel comfortable making these recommendations to you as a board because of the efforts that Megan and I have been working on and are launching this week. You've heard me say many times that every one of the big-ticket items, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, we're already working on, being Megan and I, and we're rolling out our department head and board and committee meetings this week in anticipation of not only the fiscal year '23 budget process or the town meeting in 343 days, but as I've told the prior board, because we have a new member now, but just to put out there again, because Megan and I, with our finance director, will be meeting with department heads and asking them what they expect to ask for, for community preservation and for capital. Yet before they make application to either of those, I'll be bringing all of those back to the board, so that it's understood that unlike in years past, we will be doing everything we do differently. So I was trying to rely upon an old practice that you've had of every other week in the summertime to give some respite to staff, but also to give us a chance to get into the nitty-gritty of what needs to be done. And I say that because I've already anticipated and am working on presenting to you your calendar by June 14 of what the town meeting calendar schedule will be, with those changes incorporated, meaning, as we saw last year through Finance Committee, Capital Outlay, Community Preservation, and this board, any application going before CBC for the first time will have been vetted by you first, so that any of those applications that relate to town projects already have the analysis and input of the Board of Selectmen, so that we're not caught flat-footed down the road where someone says, "Well, this isn't what the applicant intended. This isn't what the board was aware of." And so I think the combination of all those will hopefully give you comfort to do this schedule as requested with the timeframe as well. But last but not least, the proof is in the pudding, and I need to make the pudding. So I know that you folks will keep... So I know that you folks will keep me to that, and I would say to you on behalf of the team that we will continue the work, and if we have the opportunity to take a break every now and then, we will certainly be better for it as we work towards town meeting in 343 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the proposed 2021 Board of Selectmen summer schedule in hours.
Discussion, I think we've left it that we'll move this as our basic schedule and then add to it as we go forward. Take a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2022 holiday calendar.
Second.
Doesn't take a lot of discussion, but Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm I.
Where are we at?
We're at the- Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have representatives that are going to make a presentation this evening. We have Attorney Andrew Singer, and in a moment, I'll be making Mr. Tim Sawyer a presenter. Attorney Singer and Architect Sawyer are here on behalf of Peter Donovan and Gary Terry, working from memory here, so I hope I'm saying that right. And they are looking to update the board on a prospective project off of Sisson Road that is known, or will be known as Chloe's Path. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn it over to Attorney Singer to introduce his team, and then Mr. Sawyer, the architect, can walk us through the documentation.
Mr. Singer, if you will, will you start at the beginning and just give us a vision of where you're going before we lose track of it, and then we'll get into more details?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of the applicant for this proposal. We are here to give you an informal introduction and seek some preliminary input from you about this exciting new project that is off Sisson Road. It is eight acres of land, kind of next to and behind the fire police station complex and roughly across the street from the cultural center, the community center. This is a proposal, I submitted a letter to you in your packet, and I will go over that, and then after my introduction, Mr. Donovan would like to speak as one of the owners, and then Mr. Sawyer will go through the rest of the preliminary plan packets. To your point, Mr. Chairman, what you see highlighted on the screen on this aerial photo is the property. The part of the property to the southeast, which is, has a white label on it, that is wetland, mostly wetland area that has previously been donated to conservation. The property had originally been 12-plus acres, so what you see for the development area where the road is already in, which will become a driveway, is the eight acres that I mentioned. This is a proposal to construct two buildings with 96 units, a total of 144 bedrooms, on the property for affordable housing use. The owners have put together a very strong team, and we're all here in case you have questions, but this is a preliminary meeting where we wanted to discuss the project, process, let you know the community outreach that we're proposing, and, you know, we're at the very, very first step of the process. What you will see on the proposed preliminary plans, I believe, is a very well-thought-out proposal that is considerate of the topography. It protects the most sensitive resources around the property. The proposal is set completely far back from Sisson Road and is very well-screened. By using the topography, you will see that parking is being proposed underneath the buildings, and the project is being designed, the community is being developed, to be able to easily connect up to the future town sewer when it comes down Sisson Road. And in the interim, if, depending when that all happens, a nitrogen-reducing community wastewater treatment plant for the property is being designed. The, in addition to the ability and the idea and the desire to connect up to the future town sewer, there will also be a bus stop along Sisson Road, as well as a crosswalk to the sidewalk on the other side of the street. And as you all know, that sidewalk will allow residents to not only easily get up to Harwich Center, but if they're more ambitious, it continues all the way down to the supermarket on Route 28. The applicants, before they even started doing the planning process, engaged a market study to look at the community, to look at the region, to look at the demand for housing. And I would just like to read one sentence from the conclusion of that market study in discussing the affordable aspects of this proposal. Quote, "The market potential for rental apartment development within the Sisson Road property is viewed as strong, based upon the property's location, proximate to significant concentrations of employment, healthcare, and ancillary services, access to regional transportation systems, and sustaining demand for market-rate rental apartment construction through the 2021-2025 forecast period and beyond," end quote. Of the units that are proposed, 25% will be de-restricted for those households earning below 80% of the area median income, and the anticipated rents for the remaining units will provide a needed housing opportunity to workforce as well as market-rate residents and tenants. There will be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and because this is a rental community, all of the units will count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory that the state looks at under 40B, and the town's, all town's goals are 10%. The count of Harwich at the moment is at 5.4%. This project by itself will bring the town up to 7%. We believe it is a very exciting proposal. It will require a comprehensive permit from the Board of Appeals. We are anticipating meeting with town department heads, the Affordable Housing Trust, the community. We would like to set up a meeting to invite the community to look at the preliminary plans in person. We appreciate that while you can see them on the screen tonight, and we appreciate this opportunity, it's not the same as seeing them in person, and so if we're able to do that, we are going to extend that invitation. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Donovan, and then we'll go to Mr. Sawyer, and after that, if you have questions, the relevant person on our team would be happy to take them. If we can't answer everything tonight, and we may not be able to, we will note the questions down, and as we continue the process, we will address them. So we thank you very much, and I would turn to Mr. Donovan.
Thank you.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for getting us on their agenda so quickly. I've been involved in this property for a number of years and been through a number of different versions of what I thought would be the best use of it, and I think we have certainly finally come to that. We've put together a really great team to present this to the town, and we look forward to working with the town and the community to bring this forward, so, thank you.
Mr. Sawyer?
All right, thank you. My name's Tim Sawyer, I'm with Catalyst Architecture and Interiors, we're in Yarmouth Port. So let's go to the preliminary site plan, which is the next slide, kind of zooms in on the site a little bit more. Just to orient you, this is the police and fire station, we've got Sisson Road at the top of the page, and the wetlands that Mr. Singer was mentioning earlier down towards the bottom of the page. The road that you saw on the aerial that's already somewhat built into the site is through this area here. The curb cut gaining access to the site is at this location, where the bus shelter would be located. We've got the road coming in, sidewalk that connects Sisson Road to the development. And then, obviously, the most predominant element is we've got two mirrored buildings that contain all of the units, a total of 96 units, so 48 units in each building. Each building is three stories tall, and we've got, the majority of the parking of the site is actually underneath the buildings, and that allows us to make most efficient use of the site and to avoid a large sea of parking. So there's one parking spot for each unit below each building, totaling 96 total parking spaces that are underneath the buildings. There's a drive that enters here, actually, it's two ways, so it's entrance and exit, and it continues below the building and connects below a courtyard that's elevated here, connects below the buildings, and circles back around. So the majority of the parking is under the building, elevators would be inside the building to gain access to the units up above. Trash and recycling would be in this location. The onsite septic system would be in this general area below the parking. There would be equipment shed that is located in this corner of the site. We located the buildings to remain completely outside the 100-foot buffer of the resource area. So the red line you see here is the 50-foot buffer, and then the 100-foot buffer stays outside the footprint of the buildings. The only thing that would be within the 100-foot to 50-foot buffer would be a continuous fire lane. It's not a paved road, but it would be a reinforced, either grass or gravel, path that gave fire access to all sides of the building. And similarly, we would have a walking path amenity for the tenants that would also take advantage of that walk around the building and the adjacent resource areas. Let's see. The views from Sisson Road, as well as, well, from Sisson Road at the entrance, as well as as you go down Sisson Road, were of major importance to us, so we've got three views that we're going to show you next. We've got the first view, which is literally as you come into the development from Sisson Road. The second view you'll see is halfway down this access path, looking towards the buildings. And then the third that you'll see is a photo overlay in front of the police and fire station looking across their property back towards what you would see in the background for this development. We'll move to those views now. So this top view, we are at the entrance to the development from Sisson Road, so you can see the, there's several residential structures that are along Sisson Road, and our access road goes behind them, and the topography drops off behind those residences. So we, you would have virtually no view from the access road to Sisson Road into the development, very minimal view. As you get halfway down that road, which was the number-two view, now you're starting to catch glimpses of the buildings as you're coming down that road. The first one you would encounter is to your left, and then in the background, you'd see the other L-shaped building. And then you can see the topography rising towards the right, towards those residences that are on Sisson Road. And then the final conceptual image is if we're on Sisson Road, we're right in front of the fire headquarters building, and we're looking beyond, you can, through the trees, you can start to capture the roof line of the residential building in the background. So as Mr. Singer was indicating, we're in the very early stages of design, there's still a lot of design to go, but these are the preliminary plans and site design that we're starting to work with now. And with that, I guess, I think we'd open it up for any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, as your starting question, if I could just ask, would you like us to stop screen sharing? If not, we can leave this plan up on the screen, if that is helpful.
You can stop screen sharing, I think, at this point.
Okay.
Then we can see you all.
All right, no, that is fine, I've got, Tim can click off. There we go. Okay. Yes, as he said, we are happy for any questions or comments or just discussion, anything you would like to discuss. We appreciate this opportunity to meet with you.
Thank you. Joe, you had a comment?
I do, I thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you to Attorney Singer and his team, and Mr. Donovan, and Mr. Terry as the property owners. I just want to emphasize for the board's edification that Attorney Singer had reached out to Megan Eldridge, our Assistant Town Administrator, but also our de facto head of Community Development Organizational Structure. You know, in Megan's job description, she ties to that group on a regular basis, and so with the addition of John Ideman as our director of planner, planning and community development, excuse me, we're able to meet Attorney Singer and the individuals you just heard from, Megan, myself, with John, back on May 12th, and they went over this process. What I want to emphasize to the board is, many of you recall, an issue that arose really on social media to start, and that was rumors and concerns about a potential 40B project that was brewing in East Harwich. And one of the takeaways that I took from that is to make sure that I'm engaging with staff, that if we hear anything of that nature, that staff sort of intercepts that, if you will, and brings it to the board first. So this is the first example where I can indicate that we've done that, meaning Attorney Singer and his clients are contemplating a significant project in our town, but we worked through the proper channels to start with, which was initially myself, Megan, and John, but now the next step is to get it to the board, so that through you, the general public, can be aware of what this project is contemplating and hear it here first rather than through social media. So I am hopeful that the board is pleased with this process, if you will, because it's meant to correct things that were done incorrectly in the past. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd turn it back over to Attorney Singer and his group.
We certainly appreciate that, Joe. We are learning from the past. I guess I'll start with two questions, because I know it will come up. Have you done or considering a traffic study with that number of people in that area?
It is not something that we have completed at this time. We have looked at, and Mr. O'Reilly is on the line, he's the civil engineer, and I believe we've looked initially just at site distances, you know, along Sisson Road, have not done, I believe, you know, at this preliminary stage, a more formal overview.
Okay. My second question is, septic, with that many units, I would assume you're looking at some type of innovative system, because you're boarding wetlands, which will be a critical concern. In the long term, you hope to hook to a sewer, but in the short term, we'll still have to worry about that.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, and yes, you're absolutely correct. What is being, in the interim before sewer, what is being designed would be a community wastewater treatment facility that will require a groundwater discharge permit from the Mass D E P. It would be an amphadrome nitrogen-based reduction system, so that it would provide advanced treatment not only of the effluent, but also of nitrogen on the property from the unit, so that has absolutely been considered.
Thank you. Questions? I'll start with you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How are you doing, Andrew?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. Just a geeky question, because it seems like you flushed out an awful lot of things to get to this point here. In your game plan, are you contemplate, you're contemplating, I assume, that this is going to be a so-called LIP plan, a local initiative program request that's done cooperatively with us? So that's just the question. Is that what you intend to do, or is this, you're going on your own?
Well, since you asked, Don, since you asked me a geeky question, I'm going to give you a geeky answer. Mark O'Hagan is on the line, he is the Affordable Housing Consultant for the proposal. We are absolutely proposing what is known colloquially as a friendly 40B. We want to be working with you, with the town, with the community. Whether it goes under the LIP application to DHCD or a different process, that is based in part on what the- in part on what the financing and subsidy will ultimately be. So what we can absolutely tell you is whether or not is it is a formal LIP, it is going to be a friendly forty-B. That is our goal.
That's what I was driving at, so thank you. Uh, Mary?
Um, I'm curious if some of the units are going to be market rate, and I think you said twenty-five percent would be eighty percent of median. How does the whole thing count as affordable?
Under the, uh, appreciate the question, under the forty-B regulations, uh, when you have a home ownership project where you're building condominiums, only the units that are deed restricted count towards this town's subsidized housing inventory. When you have a rental project under the state regulations, because the rents tend to be closer in sync between the deed restricted and not deed restricted, state regulations and process expressly authorizes that all of the units count, whether they are market rate, workforce housing level, or the under eighty percent.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael?
My question is, the, um, the initial project that came forward, is this the same group that's, and same owners that sold the town on, I believe it was six, six homes that were approved on this road, or did you purchase this after?
If I could maybe turn to either Mr. Terry or Mr. Donovan, who are the owners.
Sure, I can answer that. That, we're, I'm the original owner that we subdivided it, um, into seven lots about four, four or five years ago.
Okay. And so, Mr. Donovan, what, what changed between that? There was, there was a fair amount of scrutiny from the neighbors to get the seven homes in there, and I know the wetlands and, and how the road was designed played a big factor into that. How do we go from you getting a seven-lot approval to now, uh, years later, we're looking at a ninety-six-unit rental project? What changed?
Um, just the, the market in general, uh, we couldn't really seem to make the numbers work for, uh, seven, uh, just single-family homes in there, or duplexes, so, and we started to really think that this would be a, a great, um, a great project for the town in general, so just more, uh, more headed in that direction, so.
Thank you.
Okay, other, uh, I think I'll speak for a solid saying we, and, and Joe, again, I, I agree, it's great to bring this up front, and, and we thank you very much for, uh, announcing your, uh, and starting your discussions with us. I know you have a lot of work ahead of you and public comment of bringing, uh, the rest of the neighborhood up to, uh, and gaining comments from everyone. I would hope that you keep a surprise of your schedules for those public comments and your, and activities.
Absolutely, Mr., absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We can, uh, we will, through Mr. Powers and Ms. Eldridge, we will, um, and Mr. Ideman, since they'll all be intimately involved as we go through the process, we will keep you, um, up to date. Our next, uh, plans are to reach out to the department heads for, uh, informal technical review. We would like to reach out to the Affordable Housing Trust, and we would like to set, schedule that, uh, offer that meeting to the community that I mentioned. Those would be our next envisioned steps. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Art Boden here?
Go, go ahead.
This is Art Boden, he's Art Boden, uh, Chair of the Housing Committee?
Yes.
Uh, question, question from Mr. Singer?
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I, I heard your comment about the, um, the affordability, and then I also heard your comment to, uh, uh, second person, uh, Mary Anderson, and quite frankly, that's the first time I've heard that. Now, I, I've taken a lot of courses, a lot of classes set in on forty-B. I'm not, not the first or last word on forty-B, but that's the first time I've heard that if, if part of the, um, complex is affordable, then the whole complex is considered affordable for the inventory rate. Uh, can, can you just run that by me again? Because I, I've never heard that before.
Yeah, if, Mr. Boden, if I could, uh, ask, um, well, I'm happy to do it. Mr. O'Hagan is, uh, more experienced than I, so I would ask him to address that, now this go, this turnaround.
Sure. Okay. What it is, is the, the, the state has, uh, it's, they just clearly laid it out as an incentive for towns to be supportive of rental housing, uh, is really the main focus of it. Um, it's a, you know, it's a big benefit for the town that it helps you, uh, get more numbers as it relates to your S H I, and it also, uh, you know, there's some thinking that between having, you know, larger buildings with elevators, it helps for handicap accessibility. It helps for people that might be older, and so it has some, you know, empty nester benefits as well, uh, beyond providing, uh, you know, more units to be available for, uh, for families. There will be some three bedrooms incorporated in this, which, uh, there's not that many rentals that get built that way. Um, but that's, uh, it's really been the, uh, the standard for DHCD for, uh, for thirty years. Uh, just for a long time, towns really didn't want to see rentals, and it's been over the last ten years that towns have really been much more focused on, uh, supporting rental housing because very little had been built for, for twenty-five years, uh, that you see quite a bit of it, and it's, it's, is a, a perk that all units do count to your S H I. But that is, um, that, that is the statute.
How, how recent is that statute? I, I'm, I'm, I'm amazed. I mean, if, if, you know, um, if it's true, then, then it's a, a great thing. I'm all for it. But that's the first time I've heard of it.
Well, I, I can assure you, that is, uh, that is the standard, and, uh, ninety-six units would count towards, uh, would count towards the, the town's, uh, inventory.
I'm, I'm going to stand on the fact that if it's true, I'm for it, and I applaud it. But let me tell you, I'm going to be checking on it, uh, because that's the first I heard of it. And it, it's, it's great news. If it's true, it's great news, and I applaud you. Thank you very much. I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Art. Uh, Ed, you had a comment or a question?
Well, ju- just a comment to Art, you know, in two thousand two and two, two thousand three, two thousand four, I was chairman of the, uh, Town Housing Committee. I think that's your, your, your role right now, and...
Yeah, and that was before I was here, thank you.
But, uh, back then, I do remember taking the forty-B, uh, uh, explanatory course, and what Mr. O'Hagan said was one of the things they, they told us, that, uh, if you're doing a rental project, uh, twenty-five, and twenty-five percent of it are affordable, um, but count for the entire project, uh, counts as part of your affordable housing need.
Well, we don't, we don't actually need to debate this. Uh, possibly you could send the, uh, copy of the statute to our town administrator, and then we can, uh, we can have it available to, to the committees. Don?
We, we could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me put a different hat on for a second here. Speaking as the Housing Trust Chairman, uh, because a lot of things got convoluted over the last fourteen or sixteen months. I would strongly urge you, uh, not to come in front of the trust first, but to do, uh, community engagement first, uh, because I don't want either the Housing Committee or the Affordable Housing Trust to be used as a trial balloon for the public, uh, to line up in support of something without even knowing where the community is, uh, coming from. So I'd strongly urge you to start doing some outreach.
Okay, thank you, Don. Uh, Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can build on that, uh, with our conversations with Attorney Singer and his group, uh, two weeks ago, um, I had suggested they make the presentation this evening, and then after this, we're going to assemble, uh, Community Development Team, uh, Public Safety, Public Works, any number of, uh, experts in, in the town to, to hear this more directly, uh, while they prepare their community outreach. Because I anticipate that there's going to be questions that derive to the town at that point, and so I want to make sure our team is as, uh, fully knowledgeable of this project as possible. So that would, those would be the next steps that I would encourage, is that Attorney Singer and his team reach back out to administration, we'll get them tied into, uh, all of our, uh, experts, if you will, and then go from there for public outreach.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions from the board? If not...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
You, you may.
Um, they, they mentioned that it's, uh, three stories, and I'm trying to picture the parking lot underneath the building. Is it, uh, a, one level for parking and then three living spaces above it? Or is, uh, the parking space considered as one of the levels? Uh, to, to address the question, it is the first. It is, uh, the parking is under and then three levels of living above it, but because of the way the land slopes in the back, the parking is act, part of the parking is actually at grade at the back, and it's under, uh, at the beginning. So it is a parking level with the three residential levels above it, but it's built into the land. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. If there's other, uh, questions, if, if not, uh, we thank you again for, uh, informing us of, uh, your intentions, and we, uh, look forward to keeping a praise of your actions.
Thank you very much. We look, we appreciate being here tonight, and we look forward to working with you all as well.
Okay. Good night, Andrew and gang.
Good night. I'll get in.
Next is old business, and we, uh, move to the, uh, uh, shared, uh, streets grant project. Joe, do you want to, uh, start this?
Uh, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you and members of the board. Uh, as you recalled, your last meeting, you had directed me, uh, to work with staff to get updated plans and designs. Uh, in the meantime, as we talked last week, and you may be aware of, the contractor, Robert B. Hour, completed, uh, substantially completed their work on the ADA, uh, ramps for accessibility. Um, I think they did, uh, great work and, um, had a chance to walk the, uh, center today with our, uh, highways manager, Chris Nickerson, and our town engineer, Griffin Rider. Um, you have in your packet, the board also has access, uh, to the updated designs, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, there's two items in the agenda that I would ask the board to consider. The first, of course, gets to the design review, um, but also if the board wants to consider, um, additional or separate liaison, uh, given the departure from the board of, uh, Mr. McManus. Um, what you will, what you will hear this evening, and, and I'm going to defer to staff generally, but, uh, what you see in your packet and what you'll hear this evening is the town still has its effort for ADA compliance, that would be with the ramps that were installed, um, traffic calming and safety, and that's, um, getting to the striping that is proposed to begin as early as tomorrow, uh, the striping and relining and repainting of areas, and that's really creating painted but, uh, temporary, um, zones, if you will, that are meant to calm the traffic in that area and also create, um, safer access for pedestrians. And so that is, uh, the, the tone or the change in design, if I can say it that way, that comes to you tonight for your consideration. Uh, again, I'll rely upon the materials in the packet and, uh, rely upon my colleagues to, uh, address any questions.
Okay.
Specifically. Thank you.
Uh, let me call, uh, Griffin, do you want to give us a, uh, a rundown from, uh, from your perspective on, uh, I guess the key issues here are, uh, ADA and calming and, uh, parking, if I may?
Sure. Um, thanks, thanks for having me. Um, the, the, the plan as it was originally presented, um, I think in, I guess, the beginning, or the end of December, beginning of January, and then at the end of January, the plan that was submitted, it's, it's evolved a little bit. Um, you know, we've heard some concerns about, um, parking. We've, we've reviewed the plans with, um, Public Safety, um, to make sure that everyone's on board. Uh, and there's been some sort of, I guess, some minor tweaks here and there. Um, so the plan that's before you guys tonight, um, basically, you know, one of the issues that we have with, with this area is, is the width of the roadway, it does not allow for, um, I guess what we have there today. You know, the, the, the lane widths are substandard, the lane widths are nine feet wide. Um, I, I don't think any traffic engineer, transportation designer would, would ever recommend lane widths of nine feet wide. Um, nine-foot-wide parking spaces are even tight sometimes. Um, and, and, you know, so what we have is you have a cross-section of eight feet of parallel parking, two nine-foot lanes, and then another eight-foot, um, section of parallel parking. So, and that's the curb-to-curb width that, that's out there today. So it's very difficult to really provide for, um, safe lanes for travel and also have parking on both sides of the street. So in order to, um, address that, you know, basically, we have, we had to lose parking on one side of the street. Um, and, you know, we took that, we took that seriously because loss of parking can, can impact businesses. Um, so what we looked at is, is, you know, extending the parking, um, farther down on the, on, you know, maintaining the parking on the south side, but also extending it. Um, we did remove a parking space that was closer to Sisson Road because of, uh, safety concerns with, with, um, the turning of, of fire trucks, you know, but, but by shifting the center line a little bit to the north, we were able to, with the current plan, um, there's, there's twenty-five parking spaces in the existing conditions, and there's twenty-five parking spaces in the proposed conditions with the current plan. Um, in order to do that, you know, there was, you know, there were, previously, there were, there were multiple bumpouts, uh, quote-unquote bumpouts, where, where, uh, expanded, uh, sidewalk areas would be, um, enhanced with potential seating. You know, we, we, we have reduced that to, to one bumpout in order to, um, you know, minimize the loss of parking, um, and then also incorporate, there's, there's another area where there's a, a bike, um, a bike rack incorporated. We had heard from, um, folks in the, in the downtown area that there were ti- at times where bikes were kind of strewn all about, so this was an opportunity to, to put a bike rack in, in a line of sight of, of the bike path crossing where it crosses Route one-twenty-four, um, you know, in that, in that vicinity. Uh, there was also concerns that the DPW had raised about the parallel parking on the north side of the street, and when you come out of, when you come out of Route one-twenty-four and you come to that intersection, you know, traveling south, uh, whether you're taking a, a left or a right, uh, that, that, you know, those cars on the north side, uh, when they're parallel parked there, create issues with, with sightlines. Um, so you kind of nose out and you, you put your car into danger potentially in order to sort of see whether you can go or not. So, you know, the, you know, that coupled with the substandard width of lanes, you, you know, we, we felt like the best, you know, and, and the majority of the businesses are on the southern side, um, you know, the business on the northern side, uh, Odio does have a parking lot in the rear of their, of their building, which I, I, I think goes underutilized, I can't say for sure. Um, you know, so we tried to take all those things in, into consideration. I, I've worked on a lot of downtown projects in my, in my career, and, you know, parking is always a, a major concern. So, you know, we, we, we did take all those things into consideration and, and tried to create something that's, that's, I, you know, safer than what's there today, especially for tra- for, not only for the vehicles traveling, you know, one way or the other, but also for the cars that are trying to parallel park. You know, it's very difficult, um, you know, I, I've stayed away from parallel parking there. If I, if I'm going anywhere down there, I would park at Town Hall just because I know it's easier. Um, you know, just because you, you open your door and you, you know, you could, you could get your door taken off, or, or not even, when you get out, you could get hit, you know, and I know there's just been, sort of broad upward mirrors have been taken off, and, you know, I think that that, that is because they are, it is so narrow through there. So with the current proposed design, you know, there's, there's still the eight-foot parallel parking on the southern side of the street, but then there's ten-and-a-half-foot lanes, and, and those lanes aren't meant to increase speed, they're just meant to provide a greater sense of safety, um, you know, for the cars going through there. And, you know, on the, on the eastern side of the, um, of the stretch, you know, in front of Brooks Library, we were able to incorporate, uh, center median, uh, painted island, uh, of about five feet wide. So such that when you're coming out of, I, I know the speed limit is, is thirty or thirty-five at that point, I think it's thirty. Um, you know, you're coming out of a forty-five mile per hour zone, and there's no sense of arrival as to, even if you're coming, you know, there is a, a speed limit sign that changes, but there's no sense of arrival as to you're coming into a different zone. So by adding that center, um, striped island, you know, I think it'll provide folks with a visual, um, clue that they're, they're coming into a, a more congested area and, and, and slow down. You know, I, I liken that similar to what's been done on, uh, you know, on what's a dangerous intersection at, at Route thirty-nine and Pleasant Bay Road. I, I travel that quite often, coming from where I live in Orleans, and, and, you know, I, I slowed down when I come through there, and it is, it is just paint, but, but I do, I have changed my, you know, as I navigate through that area. Uh, so, you know, I think, and, and, you know, this is a, it was intended to be a pilot program, and reviewing it with Chris Nickerson today, we thought, you know, if it does, if that does work, and I believe it will on that side, um, you know, that we could, that could become some sort of rumble strip or something else that is even more, that's not only it's a different color, but it's a different texture as well. So, so that's, that, those, that gets to kind of the, the traffic calming, and in addition to, so where, where we get to the more, um, downtown area where we've got businesses on both sides, you know, we're, we're proposing, um, a high-friction, uh, like a red-type paint on the, on the north side, um, that, you know, goes from about three-and-a-half feet wide to about five-and-a-half feet wide, and, and use that area, um, not only, you know, the paint will be a, uh, a deterrent for, for speed, but also, you know... but also, you know, use some of the planters that we have purchased to, to enhance the, the traffic calming in that stretch. So that, I mean, those are really the traffic calming measures that I see. In addition, we'll be able to get some of the, they're called pedestrian paddles, where, you know, stop for, you know, state law stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. Those will be able to be installed in locations where they're safer, and they won't get, they're not just in the middle of the road and won't get knocked over after, you know, a couple of days of use. They'll be able to be placed in those center medians. And then, you know, some of the choking down of the intersections with pain as well. So that, that really gets to the traffic calming. The, the curb ramps, you know, there were nine curb ramps that were installed. There's some touch up on a couple of them that we need to do. We reviewed some of that today. But those, those curb ramps provide for better access on both sides of the street and, and, you know, access that's, that meets ADA requirements. In, in some cases, we didn't, there was, there might have been crosswalks, but the crosswalk led you to a curb. And, you know, if anyone in a wheelchair or, you know, that isn't as able, you know, can walks with a cane or anything like that, it's, it's difficult to step up on a curb. So, you know, I think that those are, those are positive improvements that, you know, that, that can be permanent, you know, depending on how we look to revitalize the area. They might need to be, you know, touched up or redone a little bit. But those are, those are permanent. They're, they're in there now. And, you know, so the next step, which we're looking to do this week is to stripe those with, with new, you know, very visible crosswalks. So, you know, the, the elements that we're looking to complete this out with would be the striping of the crosswalks and, and, you know, the repositioning of the center lane, such that we can get the, the lanes to be of a width that, you know, an engineer would be comfortable with, the 10-and-a-half feet wide. But it does come at the expense of some of the northern parking spaces. But like I said, you know, we have reduced the loss of parking spaces or mitigated the loss of parking spaces on the north side by providing spaces on the south side. And, and we are, I should have, I should have made it clear. You know, on the, when we talk about removing the parking spaces on the north side, that's only between the Route 124 intersection and sort of the second block to the east. There was two kind of true trays of parallel parking on the north side there. The parallel parking that exists in front of the church will remain because the, the road does widen up in that section. So those, those were not, were not ever proposed to be, to be removed. I think that touches on, you know, the major elements, but I'm happy to answer any, any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Joe?
I just also wanted to alert you that there are three individuals that did sign up under the process to be heard this evening.
Okay, and I would call then on those three next. If you will identify yourself and...
Chairman, we have first Bob Young, then Peter Mori, then Lane Meehan.
Let me start with Lane Meehan. If you wish to comment.
Hi, yes. I think that the proposed, the new proposed ideas, by the way, I really like the ADA ramps. Unfortunately, I was on crutches, so I've already tried them out, and they work really well. The striping, I'm all for. The part that I still have a problem with is the raised platforms in the street. I think that that's a problem. I also, with the bike racks, I looked at, if I'm correct, I looked at the new plans. I would prefer to see those bike racks, which I'm all for, more on the sidewalk or near our buildings. Putting a bike rack in the street, I can tell you with three grandchildren, the last thing I want to do is have my grandchildren, or as a family, putting bicycles on a bikes, bicycle rack in the middle of the street. I don't think that's very safe, but I'm all for the bike racks. I think it would be nice to take some of the money, if we still can, to possibly do benches maybe in front of the buildings to give it cohesiveness and a historical look. But I think the proposal that you have for down at the library with making it more accessible and more walking, I think that's great. So my big concern is I am very much against any seating or barriers or Jersey barriers out in the street.
Thank you, Lane. Let me, Griffin, why don't you, why don't you keep track of that? And I'll get, I'll have the other two comment, and then we'll, I'll throw it back to you. We have a second. I forget, Bob, you wish to comment now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This program is called the Shared Streets Grant. And as you're aware, I brought it to Joe's attention last November, late November and December. We went through the Massachusetts Restaurant Association. They brought it to us. And so there's been a lot of public information about this and a tour. But because it's shared streets, that means the public seating is part of this. It was done by the governor to help restaurants because we were closed down and limited into what we could do with heavy-duty restrictions. It's only now that, God bless, if we get this, the masks are going to be lifted and people can go back to some sort of semblance of normalcy. But this grant required restaurants to be included and to have this kind of seating out there. Now, I think that you guys, Griffin, has done a great job. I like how this has evolved. It wasn't, I was never, you know, the applicant on this. I just sort of followed along. And as it has evolved, I think it's starting to look really good. I, I think the bike rack is a good addition. I actually like the Jersey barrier over towards the entrance coming into downtown because I believe it is going to slow traffic. You take your life into your own hands if you try to cross that crosswalk, either one, by the church or by the one that we're redoing between Lanes Building and where we are. It's been erased. So that's going to be a big benefit to see that done. The traffic calming is going to come naturally, but I think it's going to look good for a period of time. And it is a temporary pilot program that we get the seating outside. We don't know what the governor's emergency order, when it expires, is what's going to happen. The Massachusetts Restaurant Association is also looking at that because as, the town of Harwich, I believe, should be proud of this, that out of seven, we were one of 17 communities statewide that got this grant. It was heavily competitive, and a lot of restaurants were clamoring for this. And so Harwich got this. I would like us to see us make a success of this for however long we get to do it. I even met, we went down and met with Lieutenant, Lieutenant Hutton today, just discussing concerns that we have, you know, as the crowds start to show up, how the police are going to work with us on different issues. So I think this is exciting to see Harwich Center evolve a little bit. We've got a great new building with the market. We've tried to do our share. I think it's time, and the Harwich Center initiative didn't work. Let's, let's build on this and let's keep going, I think. We're in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Joe, can you remind me who?
Peter Mori.
Peter Mori? You wish to speak now?
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hello, thank you very much to the board for letting me voice my concerns regarding the Winter Shared Streets project in Harwich Center, specifically on the removal of the parking on the north side of Main Street. My name is Peter Mori. I grew up in Harwich, graduated Harwich High in 2000, became an owner of Ruggie's Breakfast and Lunch in 2010. Became 100% owner in January of 2020. Not the best timing for that move, but a lot of hard work, great staff, and PPP grants, we made it through. And it looks like we're heading towards the end of the pandemic. I do appreciate the plans being revisited and discussed. However, I still have some concerns. I'm concerned that moving parking away from the main area of commerce will negatively, negatively affect all the businesses in the area. Those traveling west down Main Street expecting parking will have to turn around, or they may just keep going to a different area altogether. People with limited mobility will see it as a burden to patronize the businesses without the parking that they have been accustomed to for many years. The close proximity of parking on the street was a major factor for me when choosing the location for my business. And I see it as an absolute necessity. I'm also concerned that removing the parking on the north side of Main Street will cause cars to travel much faster, making it unsafe for pedestrians and cyclists to cross. They're early in the morning, and I see that people drive very fast when there's no cars parked on the street. And I see that people are much more cautious and drive at appropriate speeds when cars are parked on both sides of the street. Concerned that this project does not fit the original intent of the Winter Shared Streets program. It was intended to support businesses and address safety issues during the pandemic. Special priority was given to communities seen as hotspots for COVID-19 and/or designated as high-risk for pedestrians and cyclists. With the pandemic being over, there's no longer COVID hotspot. And according to Mass Department of Transportation data, Harwich Center is not high-risk area for pedestrians or cyclists. And I'll tell you, after being there for 11 years, I've seen very few with really no accidents, no cars being taken out or, you know, car doors being taken out or anything like that. So I've heard this reconstruction on Main Street is a temporary measure or even an experiment to see if it works. But now is not the time to experiment. Businesses in Harwich Center have, are just getting back on their feet. Through no fault of our own, we just went through 14 months of the most difficult period for brick-and-mortar businesses in our lifetime. We don't need any more challenges or obstacles. Please do not go forward with the changes to Harwich Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Jenny, did you wish to comment?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Can.
Yes, thank you. I'm Jenny Hewitt. I'm the library director at Brooksbury Library and also resident of Harwich Center. I served on the latest Harwich Center Initiative Committee a few years ago. And the top concerns of stakeholders and community members by far were two related issues, the need for traffic calming and improved pedestrian safety. Until last fall, when my office was relocated, I spent 20 years working at the east end of the library, looking out at Oak Street and the Main Street intersection. I've watched seniors trying to make a left turn onto Oak Street to go to the community center, families with children in strollers attempting to cross the street, and inexperienced teen drivers trying to pull out onto Main Street when the high school day ends. And I've seen many collisions and many near misses. Our youth services librarian hears the screech of brakes and the shouts and screams of pedestrians at the other end of the building, at the Main Street and Bank Street intersection. Pedestrians, I'm sorry. Our staff members have instinctually started dialing 911 after hearing crunching sound and bangs before even get to a window or run outside to offer assistance. Staff members have had many, many close calls trying to cross the street, even though we know the dangers and are therefore very cautious. We worry about the people who aren't familiar with the dangers, the unsuspecting parent or grandparent with one or two young children in tow, or someone without the speed or agility to jump quickly out of the way. These are the folks that we've worked so hard to advocate for over a decade for whatever changes are needed, whatever changes in traffic safety people believe will be effective. I'm not an expert on this subject by any means, but I have read quite a bit about it. This project seems to do all the right things, visually narrowing the travel lanes and the turn radius at the intersections, which have been shown to reduce the speed of motorists. At the same time, the travel lanes and the parking lane will actually be made wider and meet standards so that it won't be so dangerous to drive through that congested area, and customers will be safely able to open their doors and get out without risking being hit. Making those changes at the west end of Harwich Center is up to the Board of Selectmen. And I know it'll be a difficult decision as you weigh the pros and cons. My concern is if the traffic calming measures are only partially implemented, if they don't start until you get closer to Bank Street, then the motors would already be speeding up by the time that they get there. And the traffic calming measures at the east end of Harwich Center won't be nearly as effective. If this project doesn't proceed, library staff will continue to be extremely vigilant when crossing the street. And we're therefore less likely to be hit. But the same may not be true of others who don't attempt to cross those intersections on a daily basis and aren't aware of the issue. It would be a shame if this opportunity to institute some traffic calming and pedestrian safety measures don't move forward. It's been talked about and studied for several decades. The purpose of these traffic calming and pedestrian improvements isn't to ruin our historic Harwich Center. If you love Harwich Center and want it to be what it was, then you should support the traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements. Without them, the center will continue to be a pass-through, not a welcoming, pedestrian-friendly destination. And finally, I just want to say that I was more excited about this project than I was about the much more expensive exterior preservation project a few years ago. We worked for eight years to bring that project to fruition. So it might sound a little strange for me to say that, but I realize why I feel that way. I love our building and its history, and preserving it was very important. But this project involves people's lives and safety. I would feel extremely guilty if a serious injury or fatality happened and I hadn't done everything I could to advocate for the traffic calming and safety improvements. I have no opinion on the aesthetics of the cement barriers at the other end of Harwich Center, but I urge you to make the traffic calming and pedestrian safety improvements that are so very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
You may briefly.
Thank you.
Peter, yes.
Yeah. I did write to you earlier in the week, and I presume that you saw the letter that I wrote and that it was part of the package that was made available to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know that. But I presume it was shared with the rest of the group.
We all read your letter.
I'm a little bit, let me start with the compliments. Obviously, Mr. Rider has done a fabulous job with outlining what, in his professional opinion, would be reasonable changes to accomplish traffic calming in the center. And the tweaks that were made from the plan that I saw tonight that was available on the, on the website, those are important. And so that's, that's critical, and the town's team should be complimented for what it has accomplished in that respect. Ms. Hewitt is right. The library and the folks that come to the library, they are in danger, the staff and visitors. What happens at the west end of Main Street is important, and those changes are really critical. But I'm, there are a couple of issues. I'll give you the list very briefly. You know, last week, some folks on the board, or at least one person on the board, said he was enthusiastic about what he saw as he drove up Pleasant Street and came towards Main Street and saw a crowd at, at the restaurant or at the pub. That's great, but it's not nice to see drinkers on church property. That's number one. The plan, as I see it, doesn't show me where the trash receptacles are going to be. It shows me where the Jersey barriers are going to be seen or be located, and that's important. But I'm not sure that Jersey barriers and the effect of Jersey barriers is going to be mitigated by having colorful planters. Most importantly, however, time and time again tonight, folks are still talking about traffic calming. And I understand the need for traffic calming. I walk around the block. I live on Parallel Street, so I walk Main Street a lot. And it's important to have traffic calming on Main Street. But, you know, there are folks who go to the library who walk along Parallel Street. They're going to have faster cars, who are more determined than ever now, to avoid Main Street. You know, the regular commuters that don't really live in Harwich Center or that are going from Orleans to Dennis, folks pass through Harwich Center very fast. And if they can't pass down Main Street fast, as they will no longer be able to with the traffic calming, they're going to come down Parallel Street. And there are walkers, because there are no sidewalks on Parallel Street. The walkers on Parallel Street are endangered. I'm concerned that there's no discussion or no, not even a mention of what's going to be done on Parallel Street during this temporary time. It's important to institute safety and implement these kinds of changes on Main Street. I agree. I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. But you can't do that without adding to this project something for Parallel Street. I don't know how you intend to monitor what's going on in Parallel Street, but monitoring it by having some pedestrian who's on his or her way to the library getting hit on Parallel Street is not the way to do it. I just ask you to give some consideration to what has to be done on Parallel Street during this temporary project. You can't just ignore it. But thank you for the time and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Peter. Griffin, one, going back to the, of the beginning, Griffin, one, going back to the, of the beginning, one kind, one question I'd ask you, comment on is the location of the bike racks. Is there any opportunity, or does that mess everything up?
No, I'm, you know, I think it might be difficult to find the location for the bike rack, you know, unfortunately, you need, you know, six or eight feet of width for the bike racks. You know, we, we can look for other areas, but we don't have a lot of excess sidewalk space within the center. So that's why it was proposed to be adjacent, you know, it is adjacent to the crosswalk. There would be a, it's actually not a concrete bumper, but, but like a, I think it's a plastic bumper that comes with it. There would be a plastic bumper on one end, on the other end, it's right next to the crosswalk. There would be two flex posts that would be, you know, street side of that, of that bike rack in order to, you know, create some level of, of safety. You know, the bikes do get fairly long, so, you know, we could, we could look for another location for that, but we, we felt like that was, that, that on the street was one of the better locations. But I'm not, I'm not going, I can't say right now that there's no other location for it. You know, it does need to be within town layout, you know, so that, that limits us a little bit. We might, might be able to fit something in front of, in front of the library, and we did think about that, but, you know, that's kind of on the other end, and, and, you know, from what I've heard, a lot of the bikes that have ended up in the driveways or on the lawns have been on that western end of town.
Okay, thank you, Griffin.
Can I, suggestion that there is one bike rack right now that's, as you're looking at Ruggies, it's to the right, you could update that one, and then the walkway between my building and the seal is another place that you could put it, which would be safer.
I'd like to chime in here, Larry. Larry, I, I'm firmly adamant that we get the bike rack as located, because I think it's important for the street, for the bikers, when they come, bike riders, when they come off the bike path, to look down and to see a welcoming bike rack to go and park at. And I think this was part of the traffic calming measures, and I would like to see this plan adopted as is. It's been made changes, and I think this is exactly where this bike rack goes.
Well, you'd be able to see the bike rack.
Thank you.
Lane, please, one at a time, let me ask Ed to weigh in, and then we'll get back. Ed?
Well, Larry, one of, one of the constraints that we're, that this grant provides is that the expenditures and activities have to be done within the sidewalk or, or the streetway. We had proposed initially on doing some things in the park across the street, but this program does not even allow us to spend resources on planters or tables or anything, even in the park. It's, 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 it's to affect the pedestrian way, the public pedestrian way, and the public traffic way. So placing the bike racks on private property wouldn't be an allowable expenditure of this program.
Okay. Lane, I cut you off before, but you wish to have one last, one final comment on this, and then?
Yes, I was just saying that I, I understand what Mr. Young is saying about coming off and seeing the bike, you know, to see a bike rack there and making that inviting for his restaurant. There is a bike rack at the moment next to Ruggies. It could be replaced, and yes, it would be on the sidewalk. I understand, Mr. McManus, that it can't be in the park. Going forward, it is a movable object if you wanted to. You could always move it over to the park after the time period, but I think putting a bike rack in the street is not very realistic as a mother and a grandmother to have families the way they strew their bikes all over to begin with, now to put them into the road on 39 is an unrealistic thought.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask the board members their comments. Mary, do you wish to start?
I spend a lot of time going through that intersection, and it always struck me pretty dicey. Most recently, I stood there because I was holding my political signs for an hour, a couple of mornings, and I got an even better bird's eye view of what that traffic is. So this, to me, is a major safety issue, and I, I really hear the business owners talking about the loss of parking, and I respect that, but I think the greater good is to make this move, hard as it is, for the overall safety. We're not losing any spaces. Most of the businesses there, I kind of poked around. It looked like everyone either had parking in back, or at least some land in back of their business that could be used for parking. So I'm, I'm in favor of the revised plan. I like what Griffin did. So that's my thought. It's a, it's a major safety issue.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
My major concern all along, and I asked for this to come back, was that our liaison that we appointed never actually reported back to us about what, what the heck was going on. The plan is not the plan, the plan morphed. And I was really interested in knowing how much parking there was going to be, what the measures were going to be. I mean, there's some merit to what Bob Young is, is saying too. The, you can't pick and choose what it is you want to do with this, because the Shared Streets Program was, was specifically earmarked towards increasing the ability for businesses while there was a COVID emergency going on to, to be able to function with outdoor seating. So that part's still temporary. Whether that extends beyond August 15th to Labor Day, because the legislature and the governor appear to be talking about that, is immaterial, because it's not permanent. It's not going to be a permanent feature of downtown. What really got me this current week, I understand there are a lot of people passionately feel for or against this, was the one email we got from Carla Burke, who is legally blind, and she was making a pitch for the safety improvements for, for herself and for other people who had infirmities. She doesn't have a horse in the race. She's just making a comment about this being a real valuable move, and to the extent we're not deleting two parking spaces, which is, I mean, I couldn't get a fix on, are we adding two? Are we taking two away? Are we netting out? If, if we're really capable of coming out of this with the same number or even one more space, I'm going to have to actually support doing this, because as I said, Carla's email was really compelling.
Michael?
I'll start real quick with the, the theme that I've heard from the beginning of this is, is public safety. And the other theme is speeding, lots of speeding. We do have a police department, and I do think it's time that we talk to the police chief and, and direct the police chief to spend more time at Harwood Center. I've spent last week, two days, today I met with Lane Meehan. I've read all the emails from Bob, and thank you, Bob, for bringing this forward originally. Several emails from, from a lot of people, and John Eldridge that's on the call, who, who represents the, the lodge across the street from the tile store and the seal. The correction on earlier comment is, there is no parking, there is parking behind the lodge. There's no access to, to the business from the back of the building because of the way it's partitioned off. So whoever parks out back has to walk around front. I've studied a bunch of communities that, that have parking on one side of the street and businesses on both sides of the street. It works. To think that, to think now how long we have dodged the bullet, and today in my, in my quick meeting with Lane Meehan, I parked across the street, got out of my truck, folded my mirrors in, walked across the street, had a meeting, left, and then stood on the side of the road for about 25 cars before I could cross to get into my truck, huddled up against my truck, waiting for the last car to go by, into my truck, folded my mirroring out, mirror out, and then waited to get back out in traffic. I travel Harwood Center every single day, and yes, Peter, sometimes I cut through parallel, but very respectfully. And, and I do agree that, that we need to increase patrols on that road as well if we, if we make the change in Harwood Center. I've heard a lot more pros than cons. I, I would agree with Lane Meehan about the bike rack in front of the seal, and Bob, that's not for any reasons other than standing there today and watching people get their foot on their gas and wait for that break in traffic, and then punch their gas so that they can make a left-hand turn out of 124. Five of the six cars that I watched would have hit the Jersey barrier if the Jersey barrier was there. It, it does not seem responsible for me to put a bike rack there. And I do think that there's some opportunities on the sidewalk, and, and I noticed Bob's got his own bike rack, Ruggies has their own bike rack, but I do agree, or I do at least think that the town of Harwood should be able to scrounge up the resources to buy a couple bike racks outside of the grant money and put them in a park across the street. I, I don't think that we, as a town, can't find the money to buy a couple bike racks. And I would imagine it's probably some money in the recreation budget. And I, and I think across the street would be a lot better place for bikes to stop and then use the crosswalk to come across the road and, and to, to frequent those businesses. I think Jersey barriers, it, it, it may look good on paper, in the end, it's still a Jersey barrier, and we can dress it up however we want to dress it up, but platforms and, and protrusions out into the street seems to me like we're going against what we're actually trying to do and build as much parking on that side of the road as we can and make it as safe for people. And, and to the comments made by the owner of Ruggies, I, I do appreciate every one of those comments, and I'm a small business owner. You do have a fair amount of parking down behind your building, and your patrons will park on that side of the road. They do it in many, many, many other communities, and yeah, they might have to spin around, and it might be inconvenient for a while, but we, we have dodged a bullet, and, and we have to, we have to ask the police department to step up patrols and write some speeding tickets, because the, the level of speed going through Harwood Center, it goes from 45 to 35 to 25. And today, most of the cars going by me were going 45 plus. So this, this, you know, we, we can argue back and forth over the grant and, and the use of the grant. In my mind, and I would stand by my vote, in my mind, by increasing the, painting the lines in the crosswalk, making the ADA compliance so you can travel more freely, making it a safer environment to park your car on the side of the road and get out without getting your mirror taken off or, or cars stopped all the time is an enhancement to the businesses, not a hindrance, and that's exactly what this grant was for. As far as the table service, I believe, Bob, we've, we've approved outdoor table service for you already. That table service was expanded this year. That table service is set to end August 15th unless the special legislation goes through, and that would bring us till October. This board, I have not heard anyone that doesn't want to continue that, and I think that this board has shown in businesses throughout the town that we care about the businesses a lot, despite what some people, some people say. But in this instance, this Shared Streets Program was a great way for us to start the improvements in Harwood Center, and I think it's opened a lot of eyes as to how much more we should be doing. And, and this, to me, is a very responsible thing to do for your patrons and, and for the safety of everybody in Harwood. But, but I would support this, this program, but I'm not in favor of Jersey barriers and bike racks in the street. I, I don't see how it's, I don't see how taking away anything. And if I'm doing my measurements correctly, Griffin, there's room on those sidewalks for benches, and I know, I wouldn't put one directly across from that intersection, but there's definitely room on the sidewalk for benches to make it look more inviting, and, and again, at least for me, this would be a start going forward.
Why I'm on this is that we have a town engineer, we've had our highway department, we've had others look at it. With the exception of the bike rack, which I, I would like to look at again, I'm reluctant to try to push this around with, and disregard the entirety of the project and how it looks to us, at least on a temporary basis. We can study, and I take your concerns on the Jersey barriers, but they're there for a reason at the moment. So I would support, I would support moving forward as it is. There's, you know, pros and cons, but it is temporary, we have another chance to look at it. That's why I, I leave it to board members if wish to make a motion.
Before that, Mr. Chair, I just threw you to the town administrator, because I just want to get this out on the table. Would we be eligible at all to receive remuneration from the state if it didn't have the component in it of increased outdoor seating capacity? Wasn't that part of the intrinsic?
Yeah, I don't think I understand the question, though. When you, are we entitled to it?
If we were to delete that because of Jersey barriers and then say push back the seating, but we'll take the rest of the money for sidewalks, would that still conform to the restrictions of requesting the grant and expending the money?
So I think it's best for me to answer in the following manner for the benefit of the town. The funding has been acquired and several implements and items have been purchased. So you've heard the discussion about the Jersey barriers, the planters that will drape over those, the planters that stand on their own, as well as the, the bike rack. We also bought the equipment that got to the ADA ramps. So all of that has been acquired, and that represents a significant portion of the funds available. In other words, there's not a lot of money left to procure more items. If the state came back and said, well, you didn't honor your application, I, I remain ready and steadfast in my defense of that, because what we're talking about is the end result that allows pedestrians and patrons to access the, the center, safer than before. The, the bump outs, so-called, are meant to accomplish some of that outdoor access. So if we eliminate that, I don't know that we'll be audited immediately, and I don't know what the net effect of that could be, but I think through it all, the town has met the spirit and intent of not only the program, but our application.
Fudgy, fudgy though that was.
I, I think that's why you've hired me.
Yes.
To fudge for liability purposes.
I guess my point is, is that we would, we would be hard put to conform to the funding if we started diddling with this and taking stuff out of it.
Don?
Michael?
If I may, Don. We, we, we've already approved the outdoor, outdoor table service. We've never taken up expanding the outdoor table service. So what are we, are we actually now talking about expanding the outdoor table service? Because we, we've already approved that.
No, but intrinsic in this plan has the Jersey barriers and that platform thrusting out to a certain degree. That's the temporary part of it. I was trying, and I did ask that last week, what's permanent, what's temporary, what are we going to be left with?
That's down to one bump out at this point. I think Griffin would like to speak.
Griffin?
If I can just make one comment. So, so we, we have reduced it to one bump out. Where we have that bump out, we've changed it from, from the red paint to an actual parking space, so it, if we don't want to keep it, we can remove it very quickly. So, you know, if, if that bump out does get removed, we would have one additional parking space in that location. When, when I did bring up, just add on to what Joe had said before, and I agree with his comment as well, when I did bring up removing that bump out and basically not having any of the bump outs on the south side, there was some hesitation from, from Tool Design, who's been the facilitator of this, of this grant program. So my, my response back, and, and not to be curt or cute, I'm, I'm an engineer, I don't do that, you know, it was, okay, so it's temporary. So temporary could be a day, temporary could be a week. It, it doesn't have to stay there. So that's why I said, all right, let's, let's take out the paint, let's stripe it as a normal parking space, we could, we could, you know, bump it out and put a bench there. And, and my, my thought on the, on the bench would be, it's not meant to expand anyone's service, it's more meant to, you can grab takeout from any one of the three establishments and, and go sit on the bench and have a cup of coffee or eat a sandwich or, or what have you. And, and as of now, I know there was talk about decking, I don't know that we're going to have the money for that, and if it's going to be temporary, I don't know that, that that would make sense. So, you know, that's, that's sort of how we got, part of how we got to where we are right now. If I can also just comment on, on the bike rack, I'm happy to look at another location for the bike rack. If it means it's, it's not on town property, or it's not in the right-of-way property and the town is buying the bike rack, you know, I think it's still a, a positive benefit if, if we were to land it in the park. Maybe we can land it on the side of the sidewalk near the park where it actually is in, in the right-of-way, but I, I'd be happy to look at that. I've, I've heard your comments on... I've, I've heard your comments on regarding that in the street. And, you know, we are just trying to continue to incorporate the shared streets portion. I think we're still doing that, but I'd be happy to look at another location. There could be another location, you know, that could be in the street to the west a little bit more as well. But if we want to avoid the street altogether, I understand completely, and I'm happy to explore that.
I think we're ready to.
The only question I have, so the only bump out left on this plan is the one down in front of the market?
Correct.
Correct. And it's kind of close, it's close to where the walkway for the market comes out, so it seemed to make sense to me. If you went in there or even Ruggies or the SEAL, you could walk down and, you know, we just put a bench there, you know, such that we could relocate that bench pretty easily. You know, we didn't want to deal with, you know, taking tables away and who's responsible for them. That just seemed to be a little bit of a, of a difficult thing. So, you know, that, that is the one bump out.
And then the bike rack in front of the SEAL, it's conceivable that we could put that across the street from the SEAL, and then they would park their bikes there and access that sidewalk and go to the businesses.
On our dime.
Correct.
It's on complete streets.
Plus, we could, plus, we could buy a bike rack. I mean, we're not broke.
The bike rack was, I don't know, $1,500, $1,800, something like that.
Right, Mr. Chairman, we can do that.
But I'm happy to look at another, another location for that. You know, near the park might be the best spot because it is still within line of sight. You do have a new crosswalk right there with, with new curb ramps with easier access to that south side.
Griff, always leaving wanting more.
Michael.
Last comment. Griffin, the only other comment that I would make is, and I would work with John Eldridge, and I can get you his phone number. He was opposed to having a sign directing people to park behind the lodge. And if he's still opposed to that, I would like, you know, obviously, they have the right to no sign or sign. So I would just ask that you talk to the controllers of that building.
Of course. That was just a gesture to try and help them get people to their, to their places. So I appreciate that, though.
Don?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we affirm our support of the current iteration of the plan with the two notations, that the bicycle rack, we're going to make an attempt to relocate it to a different spot, and that the bump out be designated as temporary rather than a permanent feature.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. With that, I'll take a roll. Michael?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm aye. The next item on the agenda is.
Identifying a liaison.
Yeah, and my question about that is, and I'll throw it out, I'm not sure, I guess my comment would be the necessity of a liaison. It would be better to have Joe be the lead on that and have him report back to us as a whole. And Joe, I'll ask you for a comment on that.
Certainly, that's fine. No objection whatsoever. I'm working with staff presently.
Don?
Yeah, I just want to make note of the fact that we did this in a kind of odd way in the way we did it. It kind of puts staff in an awkward position because normally, they're doing the research on what's entailed in the grant, and they're making proposals to us as a whole. As I said, I got phone calls the day the construction equipment came in there and said, what are you doing? And I was wholly unprepared to answer anything because I didn't know it was starting, and I didn't know what was actually part of it.
And that's my point. Michael, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm, I think that's fine, other than we're adding more to, more to Joe's plate. But I would assume now that we voted an actual plan, and there's one change, there shouldn't be a whole, a whole lot of liaison work. And I would assume that if anything else changes, it's going to come back to a board meeting for discussion. Correct?
Yeah.
The only thing, the only thing I would add is, I would, I would ask again that the town administrator speak to the police chief, and we either take a cruiser we're not using anymore and park it in Harwich Center, or put a speed sign up to start alerting people that it's 25, not 45, and that we enforce the speed limit there and we also patrol parallel streets.
Don?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to go a little bit further than Michael. I would like to ask the chair to cordially invite the police chief to have a visit with us about that and a number of other issues, including enforcement of, you know, liquor licenses, enforcement of noise ordinances. It's, he's a direct report. We really need to have a conversation with him about what we consider to be, from what we hear from our constituents, the most important aspects of what they do.
Okay, good. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to belabor the matter, but I think before we leave this topic, I would be remiss if I didn't, again, call out the efforts of our town engineer, Griffin Rider. You know, with all the difficulties that we've had with pandemic, the ever-changing requirements of the state with these programs, Griffin's leadership and his work on this has been nothing short of remarkable. And I also want to add Chris Nickerson to that. And I was able today, Michael, to your point earlier, be able to rely upon them for a brief walk in a beautiful day in our center, but be brought up to speed in a matter of minutes. And to be able to, to pick the brains and rely upon those two experts is extremely helpful. And so for whatever difficulties we've been going through, I want everyone, especially the residents and business owners of our town, to know the efforts of Griffin Rider and Chris Nickerson to come to bear in a positive way on this project.
Absolutely.
My only addition to that would be is, is that, I'm not sure they trained this as an engineer, Griffin, and folks, but you're thrown into a discussion that, for good reasons, a lot of passion. And that makes it difficult, and I think in the end, we've come up with a good, very workable and good plan. Michael?
I'd also like to, in the same token, give our thanks to Bob from the SEAL who brought this forward.
Yeah.
And I think that we're not all, we're not all winning here, but I think that we're making a, some positive changes to Harwich Center, and I appreciate the initiative, and residents should know that their, their help and their guidance on some of this stuff is extremely important. And again, we're not all getting what we want here, but the town is getting something, and it's a good start for Harwich Center.
Yeah, I think a lot of us has been around. I know I've been around four or five different Harwich Center initiatives. And this is the first one, Bob, that we've actually done something. I would like to sugarcoat that.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, moving on then to our, Joe, we thank you for taking on the second item. Last, next item on the, on the old business is set a date for a special town election. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we actually have a discussion about an actual date, I mean, what we've got so far from the town clerk is, the soonest it could possibly happen based on the activities that have to occur. What I am urging the board to consider is, if it's placed in the middle of the summer, first of all, you're putting people in a position where you're basically disenfranchising working people who would find it really difficult to campaign in the middle of the summer. And second of all, name recognition would become paramount because when you, when you're going in a regular election, you can pull papers at the beginning of January if that's your desire, and you can plan this out for four and a half months to be able to run for office. If you're doing it for the earliest possible date, you're basically encouraging prior name recognition as the major requirement for the post. I personally would like to see this in September, but I would just hope that the board could consider, you know, who it is that could possibly run and how they could possibly run.
Anita.
Excuse me, Mary.
Anita suggested September 21st or 28th. And I called her today because, you know, not knowing otherwise, I thought, why wouldn't we do it sooner? Because we've got an empty chair. And she said, summer elections draw almost no one, never mind someone.
I move that we set, pick September 21st for the special election to fill the vacancy in the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Second. Okay. You know, and I'm going to vote for that because I take Anita and yours' comment. You know, the counter to that is, is that we're, we're, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have someone get here earlier to get prepared for the busy budget season and get started. But those are valid points, and so.
They got a rookie and an empty chair.
Well, Larry's going to double up on his efforts for liaisons.
We have a motion in a second. Michael?
Well, my only comment is, my only comment is, why, why would we not take the advice of our town clerk, who's been a town clerk in the town of Harwich?
Well, I mean, that's why I'm voting for it. I don't have a choice.
I'm an aye.
Okay. Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Town administrators' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you and members of the board, I'll be as succinct as possible. First, updating you on a contract that I executed under 30B. It relates to the cemetery department. And you may recall the article from 2019 Annual Town Meeting for the Arboretum Mapping and Software. The estimated cost was $30,000. The actual cost came in at $28,700. And so that has been awarded. Let me just find my next page to tell you who that was awarded to, to Web Services of America LLC, based in Dennis, Dennisport, Massachusetts. So that mapping and software project that goes back to town meetings is now well on its way to completion. Secondly, I'll make the board aware, but have it come back to you in a more formal manner. I had an opportunity to speak to Dot Hemmings at the election last week while I was voting. As you probably know of Dot, of the many things she does, she was speaking to me in the capacity as president of the Friends of the Harwich Town Band, and they would like to make a donation to the town in support of the town band. So we'll have that come back to you officially next week. And last, but by no means.
If I may, just to that comment, we had the chair of a town band and the temporary conductor here in, met with us in Carroll a couple of months ago, looking for a mechanism to take money. You know, they accept money into a fund, and that was set up for them. And so another cooperative effort between the town organization and town staff. Joe, sorry?
That's quite all right. I agree with that, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last, but by no means least for me, I'm thrilled to announce the hiring of Ellen Powell, a Harwich resident. She has been working as a temporary assistant in the administration department. I have hired Ellen to be our executive assistant to the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. As I've indicated to you earlier, she was able to wrap up the issue of committees, which has been vexing the administration department for well over two years. And Ellen, with the incredible help from our dear friend Sandy Robinson, who was willing to come back and work with Ellen, they dispatched that in under two weeks. So Ellen joins us officially on June 7th.
And she was highly recommended by Sandy, which worries me a little bit. Don?
Yep. And much to my relief, because Michael and I dealt with this for quite some time, is this has been an ongoing issue. I've shared it with the chair. What they did was something really unique. They got all the team members together. They got Sandy together with Ellen, but also with Anita, so that everybody is on the same page now about where the vacancies exist, when the, when they expire, and who's really occupying them. So I applaud all of this.
Joe, I have a question before you. Excuse me, Mary. Joe, do you have another? I have a question.
Including remark, but I'll take any questions.
An unrelated matter, can you give us a brief update on the Snack Shack of?
I can on several levels. First, I regret to inform you that Mr. Griffin's, Griffin's passed away, I believe, last Friday afternoon. And so we had received word from his family that he was in grave health and did hear finally that he succumbed, unfortunately. The family was kind enough to reach out to us, so we're working with their attorney, Matt Kelly, through our attorney, Matt Fair, to, to close out the arrangement. And, and then I'm already working with KP Law. We may be able to do a license agreement for this year, which is different than the lease, and we're still contemplating a full-blown RFP. So I hope to have more information coming very shortly. Of course, over the last couple of days, we're giving the family some time, and we'll continue the conversations through council.
Okay. Michael?
Well, I would, I would ask that the board send a, or administration makes a condolences letter to the family.
Certainly will do.
And I would offer publicly my condolences to his family right now.
Yeah, that was.
Harbor Master John Rendon, I know, was certainly partnered with Joe and kept us informed all the time. And John was also kind enough to convey those messages on behalf of the town.
Okay.
And then just the, just the last on this subject is, time is of the essence. I know you know that. But whether it be a licensing agreement or not, and certainly given the family, time is great. But they do have an attorney. Wherever we're at, I think the board should have something before them next week to try and get at least the word out through the paper of what we're going to do.
Certainly.
Because it's going to take someone some time to get this thing set up. And it's a need. It's a treasure, and it's a need.
Mary?
Yeah. One other topic on that, and I, I don't call it the Snack Shack because it truly was a restaurant. You could not buy a snack in there. If we're going to re-put this as either a license or a lease or whatever, could we get some snacks in there? You know, like a cold sandwich and a bag of chips that you could take out on your boat?
Don?
That's what most of the public thought we were getting.
Couldn't agree more. And the fatal mistake we made is by telling somebody who was going to lease it everything they had to do, including how to cook everything. The menu was preset, the times were preset. It just, it got way out in front of us. Mary's right, the town meeting, we were sold on the basis of you could grab a quick mm and mm and get on a boat. And that part of it was never part of it. So hopefully, we can pull it back to, if we really want this thing to work, we really want a proposal from people about how they see it working. I'm sure that Orleans never told Liam's what menu.
We need to open it up. The menu actually was successful, though.
I think you just got the consensus.
Yeah.
We're going to open it up.
All right. Joe, is that, you had another comment?
My last comment was simply that I wanted to wish certainly you, the board members, and everybody a very happy, healthy, and I think most importantly, safe Memorial Day weekend. That's also a warning that it's about to begin. And I also say that it's a reminder that the board will be meeting next Tuesday, June 1st, because of the holidays. So happy Memorial Day to everybody, and stay safe.
Same to you. Don?
Selectmen's report?
Yes, please. Okay. I actually had the good fortune of being asked by the Habitat folks who were dedicating the property today, along with Richard Waystack, who I see is on the call. He and I represented, being Bob Murray's friends, because the naming of the road was for Bob. I want to end with just the last thing that I said and then put a pitch in for Habitat. I ended by saying somewhere up there, Bob is smiling, not over the naming honor for the street, but because another bunch of folks have just found a roof over their heads. And it's so important to support this kind of endeavor because there's sweat equity involved in it, but they get donations for things, both by tradespeople and for materials. If anybody out there is interested in helping out, they can log on to Habitat Cape Cod. It's all one word, HabitatCapeCod.org. And there's a volunteer tab there for both materials and for labor. But this is a great thing.
Now, Mary?
Just, I spent a little time thinking about things that got discussed last year that didn't quite get finished and wondered how, how we go forward with that. One of the things, one of the things I know, and I have a list, too, one of the things I'd really like to help pursue is, you know, the budget is such a concern, and expenses are constrained. A lot of it's, you know, union contracts. I understand all of that. I know you had some great stuff going on, some efficiencies, but what about chasing some of the revenue items? Like that, God forbid, 6% tax. If, I think 10 of the towns around us are doing it, I can't believe we'd be disadvantaged by doing that. I know we pulled it because there wasn't enough time, but I'd love to get a, a schedule. You know, if it's going to be on next May's town warrant, we start educating the public now, and it goes in effect in January, let's, let's go after something that's going to help us.
And if I may, there's nothing that prevents the board, first, from directing me or having me work on a draft article, a draft warrant, if you will, sooner rather than later. So there's nothing that prevents us from doing any of that sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And that is the mindset I've been trying to push out. So we can certainly do that.
You know, and, and there are others. I mean, I don't think we can tackle them all at once, but Bell's Neck, that building is for sale. Are there other buildings that we're not using that we could get rid of? You know, get the money, get the tax money. I'd like to see us chase some revenue.
Thank you, Mary. Now, Michael?
Echo your earlier comments and welcome Mary to the board.
Um, echo your earlier comments and welcome Mary to the board.
Thank you.
It was a great, uh, great first meeting, and it was, uh, you get a taste of the late ones already.
Yeah, but not normally this short.
Um, so...
I've watched you.